Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March 11th Select Board meeting. We are not certain, but the Chairman, Gary Wilson, is dialing in remotely. So I think he's going to kick off the meeting. Just looking at our screen here to see if he's going to pop up there. We do have his name tagged down in front of the screen, just so we know who he is. Are you present, Gary?
I am. That's how I'm being elected in that way.
Some helium balloons or something. Replay the Oscars. Think it might be because the owl's stolen. Apologize, folks. There he is. Welcome, Mr. Chairman.
You guys hear me okay?
I can see you, too. That's okay that he echoes, but Gary doesn't.
Just mute your...turn off your sound.
We're loud, Gary, so if you want to go.
If everything's okay, I mean, you want me to open the meeting?
Okay. Just as we open our meetings, like to stand and...pledge your flag.
...the United States of America and a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Chairman, if you're open to it, we can kind of drive the bus from this end if it's easier. Thinking about it? Is he getting this right?
It was. Sounds like a bad sci-fi movie. He's muted.
Sounds like Ryan Gosling singing with Slash last night.
Okay. We're going to mute Gary for a time being.
Gary, we're going to mute you to see if we can get rid of the feedback we're getting.
Does that come from over here?
Yeah.
I think it's coming through on his computer. But it's muted.
Sorry, folks. Gary, you...still hear the echo there.
You're not hearing an echo with me, though, correct?
No, you're perfect, Gary. And you look well rested.
Yep.
Jerk. Oh, sorry, is this on?
It was a stone.
All right. Gary, I didn't get an answer from you. You okay if we kind of drive the bus from this end where you're remote? He's muted.
You take that as a yes.
You can just nod.
Can you give us a thumbs up?
Thumbs up, we got a nod, we're good to go. All right, folks, so the first item on our agenda tonight is public interviews with candidates for our next fire chief. So our first candidate tonight is Mr. John Kiblin. If you'd like to come to the microphone, appreciate it.
All right. Everyone ready?
Captain John, I should say. So the way this is going to work, John, just so you know, is Shell's going to read the questions, give us an opportunity to take notes, and any follow-up questions will be asked by the board. All right? And if you have any questions, by all means, feel free to ask us. Thank you.
Ready to go. All right. John, I want to say congratulations on behalf of the town. We thank you for your interest in the fire chief position, and congratulations on being named a finalist.
I have to go back to my question.
You're welcome. We have about 45 minutes to run through about 15 questions, so if you could keep your answers very succinct. We're going to run through the questions, and as Mr. DeCos said, we will ask you if you have any questions in the board, if they have any follow-up questions during this interview. All right, so we're just going to start right off. What inspired you to pursue a career in firefighting, and how has that motivation evolved over time?
I was always involved in team sports as a child growing up, through high school, through college sports. The funny thing is, is that my father was a troubled man for a local electric company. And as a child, he would...
No problem, thank you. He would grab me and he would, at night, he'd pull me out of bed, drag me to the latest big fire going on, wherever that may be. He'd take me to the pole hits, mostly to teach me as a lesson as a child about the dangers of driving. So as I was going through college, and I started to realize that teamwork meant a lot to me, being part of a team meant a lot to me, and the opportunity to take the firefighter exam presented itself, I thought that I would be a good fit for that, and I decided that I would give it a try. And then over time, it's just, it's become my life. It is all, you know, obviously, I recognize myself. I see myself as a father and a husband to my family, but I am a firefighter. I just, it's what I've become.
Can you share a specific incident where your leadership skills were put to the test during an emergency response operation?
Oh, well, that's every incident we go to. We're always put to the test. Without getting into the gory details of some of the horrific things that we've actually gone and seen, it's just, you're always thrown a curveball. It's the saying that everyone has a plan until they get punched in the face, and how do you react to that? We have to be able to adapt. We have to be able to overcome. And I've had to put that to, you know, to practice on quite a few emergency response operations, whether it's a circumstance that we weren't aware of during the call, whether it's a coworker, one of my teammates, or multiple members of my team becoming injured during the call, and now I'm losing people. And now, how do you adapt to that? How do you keep focused on the mission when the people that you, you know, you care about that are basically family to you, now you see them, they're struggling through the call as well, and are actually going to have to go to the hospital as well? And it's just, leadership is being, you know, being able to adapt, being able to overcome, staying on point with the mission, getting through it, and then trying to pick up the pieces after and processing the things you were failing during that, and going to your coworkers and seeing how they were processing the things that they were failing during that, and making sure everyone's getting the help they need also after that event. Because traumatic events for us, they can be triggering, and they can send somebody down a dark road, and we have to be, you know, we have to be on the lookout for that, take care of our own.
Can I just talk a little bit further to that?
Sure.
John, is there something specific? I mean, you mentioned your dad would take you to incidents and pole hits.
Yeah, yeah.
Most of your answer kind of referenced, you know, some traumatic situations, traumatic calls that your team would go on. Is there a specific call or incident that you recall that you feel as though you demonstrated strong leadership skills?
I recently had a call where, in the middle of the call, I lost three of my firefighters that needed to go to the hospital. And not knowing the severity of what was going on with them, and without getting into the details of what the call was, not understanding the severity of what was going on with them, not knowing if we were going to be able to finish the job that we were called to do, it's, you know, you have to think quick on your feet. You need to be able to, again, adapt to the situation and make sure you're not going to have any other firefighters going to the hospital, and praying that they're all going to be coming back from the hospital that night. One of the firefighters that was involved, this was his very first fire out of the academy. He performed heroically on that scene. He located a victim, he got that victim out of the fire, but then, you know, unfortunately, the stress of the event, it caused him to have to get evaluated. Again, you could curl up in a ball and crumble, or you have to just rise to the occasion and try to do what's best for them, try to do what's best for everyone else that's going to rear manning, and try to do the best for the citizens that we're serving.
Thank you. You're welcome.
How do you stay updated on the latest firefighting techniques, equipment, and safety protocols?
Well, you read a lot of NIH reports, but me personally, I'm at the Fire Academy a lot. I teach down at the State Fire Academy. It's very easy to stay up to date on techniques down there when we're constantly reviewing the job performance requirements and trying to stay current based on, you know, the recommendations coming out of Vista, which are based on the NFPA protocols. And that's pretty much how I stay up to date on them. I'm always reading, I'm always reading after-action reports, reading, unfortunately, I'm reading the line-of-duty death reports that come out, trying to learn from the events that other people have. I don't want to call them mistakes, because you're not there, right? It's, they made their best judgment call at the time. Not trying to Monday-monday quarterback anyone, but you're learning from their experiences, and you're trying to see how you can relate their experiences to your own, and learn from them, and try not to make the same events that they had encountered.
What strategies do you implement to foster a culture of safety and professionalism within the department?
Safety is a big thing. This, your department is very, this department here is very similar to my department, where always on the highway, you know, dealing with those concerns. We talked about, we talk about the, you know, low risk, high frequency, you're high risk, low frequency. We're constantly, I know in my department, where I consider these high frequency, high risk, because we are always up there, we're always taking a risk to ourselves. So staying up to date on the current federal rules and regulations as to what we're supposed to be doing for safety, whether it's wearing our vests, putting out cones, putting out markers, always training, always talking about the things we're doing, always reviewing what we've done after the fact. I don't care how big the call is or how small the call is. If we're not taking a good, hard look at ourselves and what our practices are and what we're doing, we're not going to get any better. We're not going to be the professionals that people are expecting every time they call 911. They're expecting professionals to show up. And if we're not learning from the things we do, if we're not reviewing our practices, and we're not building off of that, we're not going to be those professionals. We need to constantly be training, constantly be reviewing, and being the best that we can be every time we go out the door.
How do you prioritize budget allocation for equipment upgrades, training programs, and personnel development?
Constant analysis. We have to look at what the needs of the community are. We're going to have to take a good, hard look at, just because something has been what we've always done, maybe it's not perfect, maybe it's not right. So looking at the needs of the community should be first. That should be our priority. The citizens of the community are our priority. We also have to look at what we need to do to keep ourselves safe and healthy, you know, and find that balance, find that balance that we meet the needs of the community, we're meeting the needs of the firefighters, and we are trying to allocate money for that. There's only so many pieces of the pie. I mean, generally, a lot of times, we'll be told what's going to be allocated to us. So we will just work within, work within the budget, try to do what the best, that's for everybody, and try to find that balance where we can serve the citizens, but also keep ourselves trained and prepared and safe.
Can you discuss a time when you had to navigate a challenging situation or have witnessed a challenging situation with local government officials or community stakeholders, and how did you handle it, or how was it handled?
Well, I've been through a lot on this job. I spent some time as a union president. I spent some time, well, now, I've spent some time in fire prevention and training. I think the most difficult time that I've experienced on the job was reductions in staff and closings of stations. We, you know, we were running, we used to run 10 per shift, and then we're going down to eight a shift, we're closing a station, we're making a heavier workload on the members that were working out of headquarters. And it's difficult. It's, you could rattle the sabers, and you could go to war against the town, or you could try to find ways to work with the town to try to find alternative means of revenue. That's what we did. We proposed, at the time, we weren't running an ambulance, so we proposed an ambulance, knowing that, you know, maybe that revenue coming in would help with us keeping our staffing and keeping our stations open and providing that service to the citizens that they're expecting. The other, the other part about that is now, how do you handle for the members? The members were, the members stepped right up. They, a couple of times, we actually settled, we settled on zeros. One time was even our proposal. Look, we know that the town's going to be going through a tough time right now, we're going to propose a hold on our contract negotiations, we'd like to take one year off, we'll just go for a zero for a year and revisit it, and try to see where things shook out. So it's about collaboration, it's about working together, it's about communication, and just trying to get through the hard times together.
How do you ensure effective communication and coordination between different emergency response agencies during large-scale incidents or disasters?
I've had to deal with this on numerous occasions, being a member of the state hazardous materials team. I respond to a lot of incidents where we have state, local, sometimes even federal agencies involved. And it's funny, because everyone, it's, everyone tries to hang on to whatever little bit of control that they can have and try to exercise their authority. And I find that just bringing everybody together, getting a meeting together, and getting everybody talking on the same page, looking over the incident, figuring out, like, sometimes law enforcement will bring up what their priorities are. I'm not from that side. I don't speak that language, so when they spell it out to me plainly and simply what their priorities are, now I can start to make sense of it, and we can try to figure out how to pour that into our incident action plan, and how to maintain the things that they need so that we can all accomplish the goals that we're trying to set. We're all on the same team. We need to, again, just getting together, communicating, understanding where each child is coming from, and then trying to figure out, there has to be compromise. We can't be so dug in that it's going to be our way or no way. Sometimes it tends to be a lot of that, but I feel like trying to maintain that art of compromise and working together and collaborating, we can, we can get anything done.
Can you explain an initiative you have introduced to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion within the fire department? Was the initiative successful? If not, why, and what lessons did you learn?
So we, in my fire department, we are civil service. So we don't really have the ability to skip people, per se, on a list. I will say that within my group, I feel, I have the most diverse group on the department, which is a huge benefit to me. I can't tell you how many times I rely on my Spanish-speaking firefighters to assist me in emergency scenes, to the point where I'll even go in special call someone into a scene, or special call to the scene, just so I can have the benefit of having that firefighter that can speak a foreign language help us make sure that the people that we're serving are getting exactly what they need. And it's happened so many times now that I can't, I can't even count, and it's a huge benefit. And I think that getting out to different groups, different, maybe different church groups, different social groups, and trying to promote the fire department, and try to promote inclusion, and try to promote people from diverse backgrounds to join us, to take part in what we do, it only benefits the community as a whole. If the fire department is only one aspect of what the community's made up of, we're really not servicing everyone. So trying to get that diversity, that we have somebody that can represent all the people that we help, it's just, all it does is benefit all of us.
How do you address and mitigate potential conflicts or tensions within the department, particularly during high-stress situations?
Communication's key. We have to talk. Bringing people to the table, airing it out, trying to find common ground. That's really the thing, you need to just bridge that gap between whoever's having the conflict and get them to come to the table and to discuss it. Without communication, it's just going to fester, and it's just going to become a worse problem than what it already is. So me personally, to address and mitigate potential conflicts, it's just, I'm trying to get everyone to come to the table and talk about it. Let's just open up and have a discussion. Otherwise, we're never going to get anything solved.
Do you have a Plan B if that doesn't work? What do you do if they don't come to the table?
Well, it's all going to be situational. Everything, not everything's black and white. It depends on where the conflicts are arising from. Are we talking about a conflict potentially about people not liking assignments, or people not liking how they've gotten vacation allotted to them? Well, sometimes it's as simple as going to the Standing Operating Guidelines or the policies and procedures of the department and following that. So when all else fails, if you can't find compromise, if we can't talk and work it out, we'll go by the rulebook, and we will settle it that way. Seniority can solve a lot of problems sometimes within the firehouse when we're dealing with issues.
Can you describe a successful initiative or program you implemented to enhance community engagement and public education about fire safety?
I haven't been, I was not involved in SAFE for a while. I've been out of it for a little bit. When I was in SAFE, one of the things I tried to do is I wanted to get out to the senior livings, get out to the assisted livings and senior housing. They had a great program on senior fire safety and trips, slips, and falls, and how to prevent them. Another program that I was very much involved with, and it's not so much about the fire safety, but I was involved with the ASHA training within the community and trying to set up, became an ALICE instructor for the schools, to go out and do the ALICE drills with the students, how to evacuate in the event of an ASHA event, and also getting red and blue together, getting our police and fire together, and working in teamwork on how we're going to respond to an event like that, and how we're going to work in collaboration with each other and mitigate one of those events if, God forbid, we ever came across one and had to deal with it.
Before your prior question, you had mentioned, you know, making sure the staff is okay after a stressful call or an incident. How do you assess and address the mental health and well-being of firefighters under your command, especially concerning the traumatic nature of the job?
Have to know your employees and understand, you know, their behaviors, know their baseline. Everyone reacts differently. Everyone goes home and does different things to deal with their stressors. Me, I think that we need more employees trained as, you know, for critical incidents, as peer counselors. I think we need to take more advantage of the places like the Onsite or the Leader Program out of McLean's and encourage it. And kind of, it used to be, you know, when I first got on the job, I got on the job with a number of gentlemen that were Vietnam veterans that came from that era, and the idea was just to go out and have a beer. And that's, that's what we would do after stressful calls. That culture needs to change. We need to, we need to realize that that doesn't solve it, that just buries it. So we need to be aware of each other, look out for each other, know when someone just seems like they're off and having a tough time. And it's difficult, because when you're in a position, like whether you're a captain up through the chief, sometimes it's difficult for your subordinates to want to come to you and talk to you about these things. And one of the things that I think is important is this is collaboration with the union, because sometimes it's easier to go to a fellow union member and have, you know, if they're trained as the peer counselor, if they're trained in the critical incidents, if they know what the resources are that we can go and get for our coworkers when they need help, maybe they move more app to go and speak to them. But again, it's getting everybody on board, collaboration amongst everybody, that this is the culture that we're going to adopt, that we're going to take care of each other, and we're going to make sure that every, that, you know, nobody's going to get lost in the shuffle, and everyone's going to get the help that they need when they need it.
What steps do you take to prepare the department for emerging risks and challenges such as climate change-related disasters or technological advancements?
Well, we've started to, I know within my department, we've started to buy EVs, we're buying electric vehicles. At one point, we were looking at, we were trying to buy more tools that were not fossil fuel burning, so suggestions of looking into different areas for grants that were more eco-friendly, to see if there were more grants that would help us, enable us to buy battery-powered fans, battery-powered power tools, things of that nature. Technological advancements, this is, this is huge. The younger generation of firefighters coming up right now, when it comes to technology, they will, they will take it so much further than I ever could. So finding those firefighters that understand and like technology and try to utilize them, because there are so many apps and so many programs out there right now that can help us do our job. And then, never mind when you get into like the robotics and the drones, and the opportunities that are out there with those, and the things that those are being utilized for when it comes to doing this job, that is the next wave of this profession, and we need to be looking into adopting it and embracing it and getting our, getting our members trained on it and using it to its fullest extent, because sometimes just sending something downrange or into an event rather than people, we're keeping our people safer. We're getting a better bird's-eye view of everything that's going on using the technology, and then we can pre-plan and do a better job of taking safety measures when we go to mitigate that incident. We're always going to need people, but technology can help us keep those people safer.
Can you discuss a time when you had to make a difficult decision that was unpopular but necessary for the safety and efficiency of the department?
Well, it's funny, because I feel like whenever you're in a position of leadership, it doesn't matter what decision you make, it's going to be unpopular with one group or another. I'm sure there were plenty of unpopular decisions that I have made within my group. I know that I always make the joke that they're not invested in the call when I send them back to the truck, because they don't have their safety vest on when we're working at the scene of a car accident. And I know I get some irritated looks when I do things of that nature. As far as the safety and efficiency of the department and decisions I've had to make, I can't think of any offhand right now, but I do know that on a regular basis, as a leader within my department, I have to make unpopular decisions. And I'm trying to make decisions that's in the best interest of the entire group, or decisions that's in the best interest of the community as a whole. And again, not everyone's going to like the decisions I make. Sometimes after the fact, I don't even like the decisions I made, but we learn from it, we move on. We try to be better the next time that we're out there in having to make those decisions and lay down those orders that, again, will be considered unpopular by some, but others may, others may be okay with it.
Can you talk about one of those decisions that you may have made that's unpopular? What was the outcome? Obviously, the unpopular was the outcome, but...
Right.
What did you learn from that? What was the decision you made, and what did you learn from that? Why was it unpopular? Maybe not relating specifically to safety and efficiency, but an unpopular decision that was made.
Honestly cannot think of one right now offhand that really sticks out. I know that I've, I've made decisions on emergency scenes, or I've given orders on emergency scenes that were, you know, maybe taken the wrong way in the heat of things, and then when we get back from the call, and we're doing our after-action, and we're sitting at the table, and it's an open discussion, and anyone can air out whatever it is they want to air out, that, you know, just through communication, we've been able to figure out that, oh, I, I didn't know that that's what you meant, I thought you meant this. Or they said, oh, well, Cap, if you'd have just told us that that's what you meant. And sometimes in the heat of things, things don't get communicated exactly the way it's intended, and it gets taken the wrong way. And I feel like just coming back to the table and communicating and... And I feel like just coming back to the table and communicating and getting everyone back on the same page, we can work past those problems and get everyone back on the same page.
That debrief at the end of that, is that something you set up just for your shift or is that something?
I try to do one after any call, any significant call that we have. I try to set up some type of debrief, some type of after-action. It might not be immediately after the call. If tempers are, if tempers are running high, if emotions are high, I'll definitely try to have one then. After the fact, we bring everyone together, we have a discussion, everyone seems like they're okay. All right, let's go back and let's have a more formal debrief the next time we come in and we're all here on shift and then we'll discuss things then. But again, it's, it's, everything's situational. It just depends on what's presenting at that time. If we've been on an emergency scene for the last eight hours and it's 2:30 in the morning and I'm not bringing everyone back to the table at that point because they're already lost. We're gonna do this again when everybody's well-rested and they could have clearer thoughts.
How do you approach succession planning and talent development to ensure a smooth transition of leadership within the department?
This is something that I, I really think that we need to do a good job with. I'm a firm believer that with, on the fire ground, within the fire services, none of us are guaranteed, never mind tomorrow, none of us are guaranteed the next minute. I firmly believe that within our job, you need to know the job of the person above you because any one of us could be thrust into that situation at a moment's notice, in the blink of an eye. Your boss could go down and you may have to step up and lead. So, I really promote education. It's, I say it all the time, education and training is the one thing that cannot be taken away from us. They can take money away from us, they can take benefits away from us. They cannot take away the education that you have and the training that you've received. I think that it's huge that we are constantly trying to develop and train the future leaders of the fire services. We need to, we need to build it up that internally, when and if the day comes when it's time for someone to step down, that internally you look and that you have so much talent that you don't know where to begin. So, professional development, training, education. You can, I think, I think everyone's seen my resume. I mean, I like classes, I like to go to classes. I like when people from the department wanna come to classes with me. Because, you know, it's great to eat lunch with someone not by yourself every time. But I, I just, I can't say enough about talent development. We need to do a better job of it. We can't feel threatened by those below us that are looking to take a class or wanna go away and learn something. We should be promoting it. We've, I'm in my position now. If one of my subordinates came to me and was like, hey, I wanna take this, go ahead. They can take anything they want. Because I, you've gotta be feeling a little bit more secure in your position and not threatened by someone who just wants to go out and get educated so that someday they can try to rise to the level that you've risen to. So, I think we need to, we need to take advantage of the opportunities that are out there for our people and start sending them more and get them to a point where they can be the future leaders that we need.
In your opinion, what are the most pressing issues facing firefighting departments today and how do you propose addressing them?
Well, there are so many. We could talk about cancer, we could talk about the mental health issues, we could talk about the recruitment and the retention of employees. I honestly don't even know where to start with the issues that we're facing. It's, I'll just deal with recruitment and retention of employees. How do we get people to wanna be part of this greatest profession in the world? We need to do a better job of getting out into the public and explaining to people exactly what it is that we do. Got, garner interest. We're not the only ones that are having this problem. Maybe we look around at other departments around us and say, hey, who else is having trouble getting people? Maybe we start some sort of initiative, regional initiative, where we start as a group educating people into wanting to maybe take the entrance exams and come out and work with us. Retention, once they're here, just making them feel included, making them feel valued, making them feel like they have a voice in how, in what the direction of the department is gonna be. If they, if an employee feels valued, it's, it's a morale changer. If they feel like they're just a number, I can't tell you, that's the, I hate when I hear that one. I hate when I hear people I work with, oh, you know, we're just a number anyway. We should be more than that. We should be valued more than that. We should be a name and a face and part of that extended family. We've made so much investment in these people that they should feel like they're more than just a number. So, I really think that if we make them feel valued, if we let them know that there's value in them, it'd be an easier time to retain them, to keep them on. I spoke about what my plans would be, what, how I feel like we should address the mental health initiative. Again, peer counselors, training in critical incident trainings, promoting the programs that are out there. Flyers for the programs that are out there. Just, maybe someone doesn't wanna talk to me about it, but maybe if I leave information out that someone could just pick up and read and take a look at, maybe they're gonna realize, hey, maybe this is a place for me, maybe this is a place I wanna go and check out. Cancer promoting screenings. I know what our department, our department, we did ultrasounds, department ultrasounds. I know that we've had the cancer class from the Fire Academy come in. We've had our members take advantage of the skin cancer screenings. We've also had our members take advantage of going down to Worcester, to UMass Worcester's hospital and having their blood work checked. And just promoting that. There's plenty of free things that we can be doing out there that a lot of places just aren't taking advantage of. And we really need to, you know, just promote it and push it. And again, mental and physical wellness should be promoted constantly.
That concludes the questions for the actual interview. I wanna turn to the board and ask if they have any follow-up questions at this time.
Mr. Wilson?
I, you know, I just, this is just more for the public. I just want the public to know that each of us did meet with John individually. I know I spoke with him on the phone for probably approximately an hour and I know each one of you had met with him as well. So, there's a lot of the questions that I had came out in that interview. So, I definitely wanna thank, thank you, John, for stepping up and wanted to do this job. You're obviously a very passionate firefighter and a great leader. So, I appreciate you coming out and putting your foot forward for the job.
Thank you. Appreciate you having me.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Can't top that.
He was number one.
What do you think makes a good relationship between the department and like the select board or the town offices? What do you do to?
Transparency, communication. I, I was, I believe I was speaking with you when we were talking about communication and if something's going on, making sure you're aware of it, making sure that no one gets blindsided by anything, keeping the best interest of the community at heart, whether it's about the safety, whether it's about the image, whether it's about economic impact that could be occurring because of the event that we have happening. I think that they just need to have an open line, open, open door policy, open communication policy. Again, working together. It's not about the individual departments per se or the individual boards. It's about the community as a whole. So, how do we collaborate as a whole to make sure that we're always constantly looking out for the best interests of the community and the citizens that live here? So, again, whether it's, whether it's an event that's gonna be economically impacting the community, whether it's a public safety event, whether it's something that could just tarnish the image of the community, making sure that everyone's aware of it immediately and working towards mitigating it together and trying to minimize it so that we don't have, you know, lasting impacts that are just gonna, you know, that simple communication could have avoided.
And what do, you talked about a lot about, you know, providing mental health services for the people under your command. What do you do for yourself and?
Oh, boy. Well, I have, I have taken advantage of the debriefings. I, I haven't had to go, I haven't gone away personally. I, knock on wood, it's as simple as taking advantage of the debriefings and the peer counselors that are out there, I don't, you know, they're there for us. I've taken advantage of them. I've gone to speak to them. I just, this, this past summer, I had a very traumatic call, the death of a pediatric patient. I'm a dad, right? This was very difficult. Took advantage of going and getting through the debriefing, talking to some people, keeping myself mentally healthy so that I can, I can get back out there and be the leader that I need to be for, for my, for my group.
All right, I'll throw it out there. As a, as a captain, are you in the union or are you in management?
I am in the union. Yes.
So, that'll shape my question then. If you were to be chosen as chief, how would you transition from negotiating from the union side to negotiating from management side, if you will?
We're all bound by the same rules, right? It's, it's, I don't believe it'd be really that big of a transition going from one side to another. It's just a different perspective that I'm coming at it from now. Not that the union isn't trying to look at the best interests of the community and the town. They are to an extent, but they have an obligation to their members. And I never, I would never fault them for the things that they're looking for because they're looking for the safety of their members, they're looking for the economic well-being of their members. That's their job. That's who they're representing at the time. When you go as the chief of the department, when you're sitting there and then, you're, you're representing the community. You're looking at the best interests of the community, the best interests of the town. So, it's just, it's just changing the perspective of who it is that you're working for at the moment and doing the best you can at the table to make sure that you're representing that side the best you can.
Anything else? All right. John, I'm gonna give you this opportunity. We have a few minutes left. If you wanna ask the board or myself any questions or if you wanna just give a wrap-up statement.
I just, I really thank you very much for this opportunity. It's, it's been a pleasure to meet you all. I know when you look at my resume, I know you see a lot of things, but I know that there's one thing that's glaringly obviously missing and that's the title of chief. I know I'm just a captain right now. I know that the title of chief carries a lot, but it is a title. It can be, it can be given. The one thing that can't be given is leadership traits. I feel as though I'm a, I'm a leader. I've proven it at my level at home. I prove it every week and month at my levels and within the hazmat team. One of the biggest honors I have is the fact that I represent 45 hazmat technicians from the rank of chief down to firefighter where I've been elected into that position by my peers for being a leader. So, that being said, I just, I appreciate the opportunity. I hope that I someday could have the opportunity to be that leader for you and for this community. And, you know, thank you all so much for this and wish you best of luck in your deliberations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You can take one if you want.
All right.
All right.
Transition here, folks. For those of you, if there's anybody watching, we've got a transition. As we welcome the second candidate. Thank you.
Okay.
Chief?
See you again.
You too. Nothing for Gary?
You guys aren't this quiet.
Nothing for Gary? Gary, the man in the box.
The man in the box.
So, the way this is gonna work is, Gary's remote. Michelle's gonna read through the questions and then if there's any follow-ups, we'll, we'll interject.
All right, sounds good.
Don't wanna steal all your thunder, so you can go ahead and finish then.
It's not my thunder, it's the board's thunder, the town's thunder today. So, still, thank you very much. I wanna congratulate you on being named a finalist for the fire chief position.
Thank you.
Would you have a series of questions here that I'll be asking? As Mr. Dukos stated, we have about 45 minutes to go through 15 questions and for the board to ask any follow-up questions afterwards and yourself to make a final statement or ask any questions you have.
Okay.
All right, so we're just gonna jump right in. What inspired you to pursue a career in firefighting and how has that motivation evolved over time?
So, my involvement in the fire service really started when I was a little kid. I grew up in the Harvard Fire Station. My father was a firefighter in Harvard for many, many years prior to becoming the fire chief here in Littleton. So, it's all I know, to be perfectly honest with you. Over time, I think that that has transitioned from just a love of the job to realizing my place is in a leadership capacity. And certainly that my place is helping and educating others and sharing my joy and my passion for the fire service. Certainly, one of the things that I do quite a bit is mentor other people, both internally to my role as the fire chief in Groton, but throughout the state with the Fire Chiefs Association and certainly plenty of other folks from, from around the area that from time to time will say, hey, I have some questions. Maybe you can help me here. So, that's definitely kinda how it's, how it's evolved from just, hey, I wanna go out, I wanna go on calls. I want to help people to, I realize I have an important place in helping those who help others.
Can you share a specific incident where your leadership skills were put to test during an emergency response operation?
Yeah, you said we had only 45 minutes, so this is gonna be a challenge. Certainly, we've had quite a few very bad calls in Groton over my tenure. As you've all seen from my resume, I've been the chief of Groton for just shy of 10 years at this point. I mean, in that time, we've had some truly horrific emergencies that have occurred from fatal fires to homicides to drownings to child fatalities. Certainly, each one of those becomes a leadership challenge in terms of taking care of the people that responded to those emergencies, both in the short term, but also the long term, ensuring that we're not going to run into issues down the road of PTSD. So, you know, my, one of my first fires in Groton was actually a double fatal fire. We had a young inexperienced department and I think we performed quite well. There were certainly lessons learned out of that, that fire that helped grow and develop the department to where it is today.
Did you take a leadership role in, in taking from those lessons and teaching the rest of the department? How did those come about?
Yeah, so, I mean, it all comes from after actions. So, for, and after actions is, is kind of looking back at what occurred within the emergency, what we can make adjustments to, both positive and negative. Certainly, we talk about the good things that happen in an emergency. Typically, those are things we're gonna keep doing. But anything where, you know, performance wasn't at its maximum, we made adjustments, whether it's through equipment, training, guidance, all of those different, different aspects. So, developing a document to then kinda drive that change down the road is incredibly important.
How do you stay updated on the latest firefighting techniques, equipment, and safety protocols?
So, there's a number of different ways. One is certainly reading. You know, you look at my Facebook feed and it is item after item of new ways to deal with emergencies, provide leadership, coaching, mentoring to different people. But attending classes, conferences, and one of my roles through the Fire Chiefs Association is actually being part of the mentor program. So, it's important for me to stay up to date with the latest trends, certainly with, when it comes to dealing with various issues. Another hat that I also wear through the Fire Chiefs Association is I'm on the Board of Directors. So, there's 15, 16 fire chiefs throughout the state that are the, the driving, the driving force behind the overall Fire Chiefs Association. So, lots of times, new issues, innovations, et cetera, end up in those Board of Directors meetings very early on.
What strategies do you implement to foster a culture of safety and professionalism within your department?
So, I think safety and professionalism certainly are very, very important things. So, leading by example is the number one, the number one thing for sure. But empowering people, giving them the appropriate resources, knowledge, and training in order to make good decisions is important. I think that that is something that we've really started to excel at in Groton where folks really are all about helping each other, keeping each other safe. Through that, there's quite a bit of innovation that comes of, hey, could we try doing something a little bit different because it's safer, it's more efficient, it's more effective in the overall service delivery?
How do you prioritize budget allocation for equipment upgrades, training programs and personnel development within the department?
So that's a long question right there. Again, I refer back to, we only have 45 minutes for that one. So the allocation of equipment upgrades, training programs, all that goes through a continual evaluation process, right? The folks that are on the street every day, they're the ones that really know what tools and resources they need to be successful in their mission. So having that open line of communication from the top down and the bottom up is imperative to the overall success of the fire department. I think that as you look at the needs, you're then able to develop a long-term plan and certainly a strategy in order to implement that plan. So it may be over multiple fiscal years, or it may be a short-term issue where there's a new evolving factor that has created issues where you need to come before the board, before the finance committee and do a reserve fund transfer, or maybe it's a repurposing of existing monies that are already allocated.
Can you discuss a time when you had to navigate a challenging situation with local government officials or community stakeholders and how did you handle it?
COVID. I think that's kind of a, that's sort of an easy one in terms of when the COVID pandemic hit and clearly the world shut down, there was a lot of questions as to what it was and how we deal with it. That was a time where, whether I liked it or not, I was put into that position of guiding the overall town policies, not just the fire department, which I think is an important concept in kind of who I am, in that I don't just look internal to myself or internal to the fire department, but I look at the community as a whole. And I think that that COVID pandemic, you had a lot of information, you had a lot of misinformation, you had a lot of theories, you had a lot of opinions that all needed to be addressed in a positive manner to achieve an outcome that everybody could live with.
How do you ensure effective communication and coordination between different emergency response agencies during large scale incidents or disasters?
Well, I think this starts before the incident actually even occurs. I think having the relationships with the other emergency response organizations is absolutely imperative. If you know you're going to be working with, for instance, the state police on 495, hopefully the first time you've had a conversation with the state police, the folks from the state police is not at that incident. Hopefully, it's before, where you can set your expectations of one another, understand one another's capabilities. And that's true of both external to the town, such as the state police, but internal, whether it's the local police, highway department, light department, any of those. And that's something that I've worked very hard, fostering those relationships between multiple response agencies in order to really achieve the overall goals. Once that incident does happen, it all works under a unified command. If it's something that's more police centered, then they're taking the lead on that call. We're providing a backup role. With some of the unfortunate events that have happened in Groton, that's exactly what I've done on homicides, where our role as the fire department was very minimal. However, my role as the fire chief, I looked at the police officers and said, hey, we're going to have a long-term issue in terms of what they've seen, what they're going to be seeing, what they're going to be doing. And I've worked very hard to put the pieces in place to support the police through, you know, different PTSD or critical stress programs.
Can you explain an initiative you have introduced to promote diversity, equity and inclusion within the fire department? Was the initiative successful, if not why, and what lessons did you learn during the process?
So one of the initiatives that we put forward in Groton was changing the face of firefighters. So we have been very active in recruiting on-call firefighters for the last 10 years. I think we've been very successful in recruiting on-call firefighters for the last 10 years. But the folks that were coming in were all males between the ages of 18 and 35, very narrow window of folks that were coming in. So one of the things that we did is we asked some of our firefighters to come in and do some photo ops. And we use mostly our female firefighters to say, hey, you know, this is something that is a priority for the department. It's an underutilized resource for the town and the department, and I think it was pretty successful. We definitely had additional female applicants to the department. To an extent, we hurt ourselves in that we trained them, we brought them in, we trained them well, and other people hired them. But I would still call that, you know, a great success for us.
If you'd have do anything differently during that, would you have done anything differently?
I think I would have pushed even harder. I think that, you know, it was, we were kind of moving forward without a roadmap, and I think that, you know, I think that we probably could have pushed a little bit harder in terms of getting some of our female firefighters out in the community, at community events, to actually talk one-on-one with other women.
How do you address and mitigate potential conflicts or tensions within the department, particularly during high-stress situations?
So I think a lot of it comes down to communication. It really does. Having good relationships with people, the ability to communicate with people throughout each area of the department, I think, is what truly starts that all off. I think that one of the things to do is sort of get an idea of what's happening. And sometimes it's as simple as getting people into the same room to have a discussion. I can certainly tell you that we've had some very good discussions, we'll call it, we could even say very loud discussions at times, but at the end of the day, when folks get their thoughts off their chest, everybody can leave the room on the same page, everybody can leave the room laughing, having respect for one another, and I think that that's, you know, that's really awesome. It's all through, you know, developing a culture of trust, where each person knows that the other person is there for the best interest of them and the organization.
How do you deal with the situation if maybe the parties won't come to the table?
So if they won't come to the table, sometimes you sort of have to broker, you know, work with the two people individually. I've been successful getting them to come to the table. There's been resistance, and it's really having those conversations prior to, you know, prior to bringing them all into the room and saying, hey, we're not going to get a resolution until we sit down and we have a discussion and we hash this out. You know, and certainly, there's been times where folks have been very resistant to it, but I think if you're consistent in how you deliver the message and the importance and drive the trust in the organization, people will know that it's not necessarily about them, that it's about the organization and ultimately what's best for everybody involved.
Can you describe a successful initiative or program you implemented to enhance community engagement and public education about fire safety?
So we've done quite a few different things in that respect. We have a safe and senior safe program in Groton. Our safe program is modeled after the state safe program. It had definitely taken a turn for, I don't want to say the worst, because that's not the right words, but it had become a bit stale. So we revamped the entire program, which I thought was really great. And we get into the schools in October of every year. We make sure that we get into the different daycares. So those are important. Our senior safe program, that one is again modeled after a state program, but through state funding, we're able to get into folks' houses that are seniors and put in smoke detectors, CO detectors. We do checklists in order to determine if there's hazards in their homes, and I think that that's been a very successful program. In addition to that, we do very regular events, Veterans Breakfast, one of our best events in town. So every month, we have the veterans in town can come in and get a free breakfast. And that is one of the best opportunities to see folks, to talk about fire prevention, to talk about what troubles them, what keeps them up at night, what they're worried about, and what we can do to help them. We've certainly had a number of times where there's folks who are not living in the best conditions, and if it wasn't for the Veterans Breakfast and them saying, hey, you know, I have this situation, and you realize that the situation is borderline dire, we wouldn't know. In addition to that, we have a thing with food. We have a chili luncheon that's for seniors, and part of that is always a safety message to the seniors. We have a spaghetti dinner. Part of that is part of, is getting information out to our seniors about different things that they can do. So we have a lot of very active programs that get us into the community, that get us into people's houses, that help identify our most vulnerable population that exists.
How do you foster staff participation in events like that?
What was that?
How do you foster staff participation in events like that?
Leading by example. You know, I think the first Veterans Breakfast we did, it was myself and my administrative assistant. We did the cooking and the folks on staff said, hey, you know, we can't watch it just cook, so we'll help. That was nine years ago. So it's had staying power, I'd call it, but making sure to go out. So with our senior safe program, typically our ambulance crew does those specific inspections and visits. I will go sometimes in somebody's place to see how our program is performing. So one of the last ones I went to wasn't paying attention to where we were going, and it was my high school principal. So he showed up and he's saying, wow, I can't believe you're here installing smoke detectors in my house. You know, and it's, it was good. It went a long ways, and I heard about it 10 times in the next week from different people in town, so it really gained a lot of momentum.
How do you assess and address the mental health and well-being of firefighters under your command, especially considering the traumatic nature of the job?
Yeah, so that's an omnipresent issue within the fire service, where you have, you know, a very constant bombardment of, if you will, of traumatic events, right? And there's an ebb and flow to that pattern of you may have a whole bunch of really bad events all stacked on each other and then not any for a little bit. And it's a matter of, again, that trust and culture of everybody's there to help everybody else. But when you have truly traumatic events, you need to put the resources in play as soon as possible in order to mitigate any long-term or lasting impacts that can occur from those events. So I think that's something that we've been incredibly successful with. You know, we may have folks that go for different services at different times to, in order to mitigate some of those signs and symptoms, but again, it goes back to that regular communication. You need to have that relationship with folks where they can come in and go, hey, I didn't like what I saw, and it's keeping me up, right? And then knowing what you need to do in order to mitigate that as soon as possible.
So outside of yourself in the chief role, talk about some of those resources that you just mentioned. What are some of those resources that you've utilized for staff?
So, yeah, so I mean, there's different peer support groups that exist, whether it's through the IFF or the Onsite Academy out in Westminster. There are groups that will actually come out, the critical incident stress management teams will come out, and that's somebody I can call 24 hours a day and say, hey, we have a bad incident that's going on. And typically, within a few hours, if we need that service, you will have somebody on site. I can recall, actually, in my time as the interim chief here in Littleton many years ago, we had a call and you could just tell from the second that it started that it was not going to be a good call. And the services were already put in play before the ambulance crew had even arrived on scene. The initial notification was made of, hey, we're going to need services, you know, they're not even on scene, but the sooner you get that ball rolling, the sooner you can start to help people if they're experiencing signs of PTSD or critical incident stress.
What steps do you take to prepare the department for emerging risks and challenges such as climate change-related disasters or technological advancements?
So somebody should have warned you about me talking about climate change. Climate change is certainly a huge issue that is coming down the pipe, and the fire service and emergency management is going to be on the forefront of it. You're going to have bigger fires, floods, storms, you know, everything's going to be bigger and better than we've ever seen it before. Part of what has kind of interested me in this is just reading about these regular changes that occur within our climate and the fact that today that is happening at a far greater pace, and we're starting to now see it with the floods, the fires and the severe storms. So I think that the first piece is educating, and that's a very important piece, both myself and everybody on the department, so that they understand that, hey, this is coming down the pipe. And it all goes through an assessment, right? We can look at Beaver Brook and say, oh, there's a good chance that 119 at some point is going to be closed. Now, we need to start planning for that eventuality. Fires, I think, is going to be the big one that surprises people in terms of the severity and the instances of massive fires like we have not seen in decades. So, you know, giving that vision of, hey, here's what's coming down the pipe, here's the facts that kind of exist behind that, you know, and educating, again, myself and everybody else is critically important to those things. I think that one of, if I could just add, one of the successes that I've had was actually COVID. So we had identified that back in 2015, I think it was, if everybody recalls, the Ebola scare, might have been 2016, there was an Ebola scare, and we did an evaluation of where we were and said, hey, you know what, we're not ready for this. Groton has a very large number of international students, so people traveling abroad coming in, you know, Ebola was, albeit a small risk, still a risk. So we looked and said, all right, well, you know, Ebola may not happen, but what else could happen? So at the outbreak of COVID, we had 6,000 sets of PPE sitting, ready. We had policies in place for Ebola that were very easily adapted in order to, in order to start to create some mitigation. And, you know, as I look at it, I see that climate change is our next COVID challenge. And it could be today, it could be tomorrow, might not be for 10 years, but we have to be ready when it truly hits hard.
Can you discuss a time when you had to make a difficult decision that was unpopular but necessary for the safety and efficiency of the department?
Yeah, I think that that's something that's, I don't want to say it's common, but, you know, I think at various times, we've had different policies that we've put out. And I can kind of take policies and put them under a large umbrella because there's always going to be differences of opinion. In each of those circumstances, I think it's something where communicating the ultimate goal is important. Create a vision for what the problem is or what the outcome is that you're looking for, and again, work towards that. You know, I'd like to think that one of the things that I'm good at is taking on other people's ideas and listening. So I've made mistakes before. I understand this. I also understand that at times, there may be a policy decision that seems really like a great idea. a great idea, and I'm missing a piece of it. And the lieutenant comes in and says, hey, you're missing a piece. And I have two choices. One choice is, no, this is the way it is. And that may have to be the case. The other piece may be, yeah, you know what, I messed this up. You know, this is on me. So I think there's been numerous times that that's happened. We closed, in Groton, we have three stations. Right now, only one of them is open. I don't think it was a popular decision to close the other two stations, but we did not have the staffing, either in the career staff or the call staff, in order to maintain three open fire stations. So we consolidated under one roof. And initially, it was met with resistance, and I think that, you know, a few people said, hey, I'm not sure this is a great idea. We decided to let it go for a little bit, see how it worked out. And today, looking back, I think that everybody will agree that, hey, you know what, this was one of the best things that we did in order to maintain the department, the services, et cetera.
You talked a little bit before about recruiting the on-call staff for several years. How do you approach succession planning and talent development to ensure a smooth transition of leadership within the department?
Yeah, so I think that this all goes down to enabling people to do their job, empowering folks to do their job, mentoring and coaching folks. It is one of the biggest items that anybody in a leadership position, but certainly the Fire Chief needs to focus on, is creating that next level of people who can take over down the road. And each successive level beyond that, having folks that are able to step up to be, you know, lieutenants at some point, you know, firefighters that are given the tools in order to be successful as a lieutenant, lieutenants that are ready to become captains, captains that are ready to become deputies. So it's all about, you know, it's all about having that culture where it's not about the individual, it's about everybody's success. And that's one of the things I love about the mentoring program, is that you're given this opportunity, not only to help other Fire Chiefs, but other fire officers in other places, not just your own department. I'll tell you that if somebody comes into my office and says, hey, someday, I want to be a Fire Chief, and a 19-year-old, I guess he's 20 probably now, you know, I want to be a Fire Chief someday. Okay, probably a little ways away from that, but, you know, we can start that mentoring right here, right now, today. So I think that that's the important part. I think for years and years, it was about improving myself, and that's how I saw my role in the Fire Service. Hey, I need to be the best at everything I do. I've matured in my role in the Fire Services, and it's not about me being the best. It's about everybody else being the best. You know, we have, in the Fire Service, we have an immensely talented pool of folks. There's an immensely talented pool of folks over my left shoulder, and you just have to give them the training, the opportunities to grow as individuals, and grow as an organization, and grow as a team.
Did you intentionally skip the right shoulder?
That's a lot.
No, left shoulder.
Thank you for the staff in attendance. I do want to thank the staff that is here and watching, probably. I know you mentioned climate, bigger fires and floods. In your opinion, what other pressing issues face firefighting departments today, and how do you propose addressing them?
Well, I mean, I think one of the biggest ones is, you know, recruitment and retention of firefighters. Certainly, it's a challenge almost anywhere you go, whether you're talking about career or on-call volunteer departments. It's an omnipresent issue, right? A lot of that starts with making sure that you're creating a culture that people want to be a part of, for sure. Not to overlook that, you know, you need to make sure that you have fair and competitive wages for everybody. You know, and that team environment, though, that culture environment is certainly incredibly important to keeping employees, and then also getting new employees. So I think that that's probably the biggest one that faces us. You look at competition of funding regulations, for instance. OSHA is looking at adopting 25 regulations that will impact fire departments, of which I will argue, and this is me getting on Soapbox a little bit, but I will argue that call and volunteer fire services nationwide will be hurt immensely by that. So I think there's a lot of external factors that while people may have an idea that, hey, we're trying to help, we're trying to make it a safer work environment, there may be some consequences that they're not fully seeing. And those, to an extent, are outside of our control, and that's where we have to engage in the political process, meaning outside of even Massachusetts, in order to make sure that regulations aren't adopted that are going to create hardships for smaller communities such as Littleton.
That concludes our questions. At this time, I'll turn to the board if they have any follow-up questions.
I have a couple. When you talk about getting your firefighters the help they need after a stressful call, what if they, you know that there's a problem, but they're very resistant to doing it for pride or the fear of seeming weak or whatever, what do you do?
So I think a lot of that is finding somebody who can get through to that individual person. And sometimes, to your point, I've seen that. And I've been that person where somebody has reached out and said, hey, so-and-so, we think he's having a hard time, you know, can you call him? You know, so if I know that there's a certain relationship that exists that can make some inroads in terms of, hey, why don't you, you know, just talk to somebody for a couple minutes, or even if that person just acts as a, you know, hey, let me know what's going on. It's, that's one mechanism that I've certainly used to, you know, to get to those folks who are resistant to looking for help.
And when you talked about the diversity program, it sounded like it had ended. Did it peter out? Did you accomplish your goals? Have you started up anything in addition to it?
So that was on immediately, a couple of years before COVID. So COVID stopped all our recruitment for a number of years on that call side. We pivoted away from that. I don't want to say away from it. We've still done a fairly decent job, but we've started working with some of the religious organizations in town. So one of the things I did, I went to the temple right there on the town line and did recruiting there, talked to folks there. And that was very, that was a very interesting conversation. I learned a lot. I learned a lot about their religion. I have great respect for it. I'll be honest, I knew nothing going in those doors, but I know quite a bit more now.
And if you were to become chief here, do you think that you would implement the same number of food-based community events here as you did in Groton?
So that was over, you have to figure that that was over a course of several years that we introduced all those food-based events. So maybe is the answer. Over the time period, I can't answer.
And would you invite the select board?
That was my, that was my.
Oh, that's what you were going with? Oh, so that was just purely about you?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Enough about me.
But enough about me.
Um, no, I don't, thank you.
What do you do to watch out for your own mental health?
So my own mental health, you know, I have a whole bunch of people that I know that I can pick up the phone and go blah, too. Certainly, through that mentor program that I've talked about several times, I've made a lot of really, a lot of really good relationships have come out of that. So I have folks that I can call and just say, hey, this is bugging me. And it could be something that is on the political front, internal to the department, a critical incident, any of those things. I like to get out and walk, though. Sometimes a walk puts everything into perspective. You know, a hike up Mount Waukesha, and lots of times you go, hey, you know what, that was a big deal, but not as big as I made it out to be in my head. So I'll admit, I probably was not the best at that for many years, and I think that's one of the things they've learned as a chief is, hey, you know what, yeah, I got to take care of everybody else, but at some point, you know, somebody's got to watch out for me, and I can do that. I'll tell you, I have one lieutenant that he will walk in and just be like, what's going on? You know, and that's my cue of like, okay, all right, I know it's, I know it's time to go for a walk or phone a friend or whatever.
Good.
I appreciate that question. I like that question.
The only comment I'll make is when the question was asked about how you stay up on the latest firefighting, and you brought up something about Facebook, I thought that's where you were going to get most of my information from Facebook.
Everything on Facebook is true. I thought, haven't we established that at this point?
You spun it the right way.
Yeah.
You use Facebook as a communication tool. I don't think we have any other questions. Mr. Wilson, do you have anything?
No, just thank you once again for stepping up and applying for the position. I guess one of the challenges, or maybe it isn't a challenge in your mind, what about coming back to a department that you left, obviously now as a senior leader with a little bit different perspective? Do you expect any challenges with something like that?
I mean, I think the process that I took in order to transition to Groton at this point, you know, a decade after, I feel weird talking to the TV here, but I feel like that process sort of holds true. You know, if I had left three years ago, yeah, maybe that's a little bit different, but it was a decade ago. I look at it, while I know a lot of the players on the department, I have a tremendous amount of respect for the folks on the department. We worked together at various incidences. You know, there's a certain amount that I know that I'm going to need to relearn, you know, in terms of the community, the roads, the businesses, some of the residents in town, that hasn't really changed, but operations of the department is going to be something that has evolved, you know. And somebody who, say, the chief prior to me in Groton, if he were to be going back there, he'd be saying the same thing of like, yeah, it's not the same department I left. And a lot of that's going to be discovered through individual conversations with people, interviews with each person, figure out where people are. You know, I said before that the best, that I don't have the best answers. Everybody else does. So listening to folks, taking on ideas that make sense, maybe taking multiple ideas and jamming them together into a single one actually makes sense. So, you know, there's an entire process that I've done a poor job of telling you about right now, but I have a process in my head of how to transition, and it would be very similar to the process I took in Groton.
Thank you.
Can you talk about your approach to negotiations with the unions?
Yeah, I believe in an open line of communication with the union, for sure. You know, I think if you were to talk to my union president, he would say, yeah, we can, we can talk about, you know, just about anything. So, you know, I think we have a very good working relationship where he can come in and say, hey, here's what we're thinking about doing. All right, did you think about X, Y, or Z? It may not be possible because of these factors. Or, you know, hey, your idea is okay, but it's not all the way there. You know, you're going to have a hard time making that sale. You know, so I think it's a little bit of a litmus test, and again, that comes through, that comes through those relationships. So one of my proudest things is that in 10 years in Groton, I've had zero grievances. We've been able to work everything out, sitting at a table, having a discussion, and a cup of coffee, sometimes two or three cups of coffee. But the union presidents that I have worked with, you know, we've had a great, you know, great relationships.
Pretty good. Get all that?
The board have anything else?
I think the board's satisfied.
All right. I'll give this time to you. We have a couple of minutes left. If you want to ask any questions or give a wrap-up statement.
As a taxpayer or somebody doing an interview? Okay.
That comes up at like 8:30.
Oh, is that public input period? All right, I'll wait for that, then. No, I guess I just, my only curiosity is kind of where you see the town going, right? I read the, you know, Facebook, obviously, it's all true. We've established that, but the meeting minutes, all that stuff, and I'm just kind of curious where everybody kind of sees the town going. We know we're kind of on the cusp of another major growth boom. Does it stop there? Does it keep going there? You know, and how does that impact the town as a whole?
I think that's a question for the chair. I'll jump in if you want me, Gary.
Steel, I will say, you know, I think when I came on the board, you know, it was a question that I had asked, what do I consider, or what does the town consider to be the sweet spot where we want Littleton to land? Do we want it to be as big as Westburn and Acton, 25,000 to 30,000 individuals? Or is 15,000 more realistic? And how do we start to make, you know, arrangements, if you will, through zoning and through other methods, to start to control that growth after this, you know, next boom we're going through with the King Street Project and the MBTA communities and things like that? So I think it's going to become more critical over the next several years, but Littleton isn't as big as some of those other communities, just land-wise. So I think we have to do a, really start to look at the next five, 10-year growth plan on how we can rein it in a little bit and look at our land and resources differently.
All right, awesome. I was able to get that, I was able to get my public comment one and that all in one shot there. It's efficiency right there.
Efficient. Do you have any other questions, or do you want to give a wrap-up statement?
Yeah, I mean, I think that my, I'll keep my wrap-up statement brief, but, you know, I think that a return to Littleton is something that I've been very excited about the prognosis of that potentially happening. I know we have great firefighters that work here. We have a great community here. And certainly, it's been something in the back of my head for many years that, hey, you know what, there may be a return someday down the road. So it's kind of a full-circle time. And I think that my experience as the chief in Groton, my ability to grow both personally and grow the department is an important part of who I am, and I think it's an important thing that I can certainly bring to Littleton and work hand-in-hand with all the departments. I have a great working relationship with Matt Pennard. We go way, way back in terms of working here in Littleton. So, you know, one of my beliefs is working not just in the Fire Department, but filling in any gaps that can be filled throughout the town organization. So if there is an issue in the Highway Department, and I have the means to help with whatever said issue is, you know, I'm the, I like to be a team player and help everybody where I can. So rather than carrying on, I could keep going, but I'll just stop there.
Wonderful. Well, thank you very much. That concludes the interview.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You take that with you.
Take this?
Yeah, leave the questions, please. You can take the water.
I took a water. I got one right here. This one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you. Good to see you.
I know.
Gary, I still don't know how to shake your head.
Thank you. Thank you, Steel.
All right, for those at home, we're just doing a little changeover of the room and wait till one of our members comes back to continue with the meeting.
I'll just give a little.
Oh, no, we're going to deliberate first.
Yeah, I'm going to give a little two-second statement.
Pardon?
Two-second statement.
I apologize for getting up in the middle of that. I was either going to run down, or I was going to do a big sniffle right onto the microphone. Either of which, I thought getting up was probably better.
I mean. I think you made the right call.
On my sleeve.
There you go.
Nice. Let's find out in a few days.
Yeah, nobody else at home. Which is good.
That is good.
She's going to pick them up tonight. So next on our agendas, we're, we're gonna have some discussion, next on the agendas, we'll be doing a discussion about, um, the interviews and, um, kind of our, our next step. And, uh, then after that, we will go into executive session. Till we get out of executive session, we're gonna go back into open session and our, uh, our normal programming. Just wait for Mark to get back. So Gary, what time is it? Two-ish?
No, 12:30-ish.
PM or AM?
PM.
No, 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 PM. It's, it's 12:30.
Six hours behind.
It's the afternoon, just afternoon.
It was five hours, but now it's six.
That's right.
We lost an hour.
I will be home Thursday morning.
You sound thrilled.
It's time.
All right.
All right.
Michelle, I think you wanted to.
Yes, sir. I just wanna remind the board, I know you're going to deliberate, both of these candidates do have another community to go back to if we could keep discussions very positive. And I will leave it at that.
Absolutely. You felt the need to say that, you just kinda had to, right? See why I?
It felt, I felt.
All right. Um, so Gary, you, obviously you're part of this as well, but, um, I don't know if anybody wants to kinda kick off the deliberation. We had two, in my opinion, two strong candidates. Um, can you hear me, Gary?
Yes.
All right, so we, I, in my opinion, we had two, two strong candidates, um, and I'm kind of interested in hearing what my colleagues had to say. So, you wanna jump in, Gary? You want me to kinda go around the board, hear them come up to you or?
It, it's up to you. I mean, I wrote, I took some notes.
You all did.
I had, I had conversations like, like you did, uh, with each candidate. I got to know each of them, um, a little bit better. I, I, um, I truly appreciate, you know, Michelle and the work that you guys did, um, coming to this point because I, I absolutely believe, uh, these, these two are extremely qualified and, and, um, we're blessed to have two such qualified candidates, cause I, I honestly think either one of these could, uh, lead our department into the future. Um, I, I, I did, you know, it's hard, John Kivlin, uh, it was hard to hide his passion. When he speaks about firefighting, especially in the one-on-one, he seemed, uh, it, it's just his life, it's something he's always wanted to do, and, and I think Steel spoke to that as well. These are life, lifelong firefighters, um, that have a lot to, lot to offer the community. Um, you know, I, I will, I'll save, you know, some final notes. I think, you know, I wrote John Kivlin is ready to be a chief. That is, is clear as day to me. He's going to be a chief, uh, in the community, but, um, as I was taking notes, I, I had said, there's a professional calmness of, of Mr. McCurdy's demeanor that speaks directly to what I would like to see in the, in the senior, next senior leader of such a critical department. And that's, that's kinda where I fell. Um, I saw him kinda leaning, I would say, towards, towards, uh, Mr. McCurdy, uh, for that reason. I, you know, there's something about, uh, the leader that I think, um, the department could needs, and I think it's, um, his knowledge of the community, I think it's, it's critical, um, as we move forward, you know, to the, some of the, the big, big growth and things that we have coming up. So that's pretty much all. You know, I have more to add, but I'd like to hear what other people have as well.
I'm, I'm just gonna jump in. I think, um, we, we all probably share a lot of the same thing and, um, you just kinda teed it up a little bit. I mean, Steel is that calm and that professional because he's been doing the job for 10 years, and John actually made a comment in his closing arguments that there's one thing that's, that's missing on my resume, and that is the word chief. And, um, Steel has been a chief for 10 years. He has been, he has been in this department, he lives in this department, he does have, he mentioned he has a strong relationship with Matt Pennard, and I think he has a strong relationship with all the departments. So as far as a transition, um, I think that there's, there's a, there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of check box, checks and checkboxes that, uh, would make me lean towards Steel. Everything Gary said about John, I think he, and Mark and I did an interview with John together, and, uh, passion was the word that, uh, he and I really came out of that with. And he, he, to your point, Gary, he will make a good chief. Um, I just think that for where Littleton is right now, um, the experience and professionalism and that calm, confident attitude that Steel displays, um, is something that I think would be welcomed in Littleton Fire Department.
Um, I, I agree, um, pretty much universally. I think they both interviewed well, uh, but I think that when their questions diverged, um, Steel was able to give concrete examples of things that had happened while he was chief in Groton, of programs he'd implemented, of events that had happened or real-world experience he had that I think makes him the stronger candidate.
Feedback.
I'll let Mark go first.
Um, I don't think we can go wrong with either, either of them. Um, um, yeah. The, John was stressing communication, education, outreach, you know, support to the department, which I think is a big, a, a big deal. And I agree that Steel had more of the, um, calm demeanor to him, right? Like, the, the professionalism that comes from, the professionalism and confidence that comes from experience, right? Um, I think, yeah. I, I think that was, I mean, they're neck and necks, right? Um, it's just, I'm favoring Steel slightly just based on experience, um, and not, not because he has the experience, but because he has the demeanor that comes with the experience, right? Um, thank you.
Um, yeah, I mean, I echo all of your sentiments. Um, I thought Steel's passion for mentorship and future-proofing were especially compelling, um, in that Littleton's facing a lot of challenges in the future, and he, um, clearly has a passion for looking ahead and down the line and preparing for that. Um, I agree with John that his leadership, um, credibility is, is unquestionable. Um, I very much value the breadth of his experiences that he sought out, um, and his passion, uh, particularly for communication and, um, for succession planning, I thought were very compelling. But ultimately, I agree that, um, I think that it's, um, it comes down to experience in the position that we're hiring for.
One more thing that struck me is Steel's answer about climate change. I thought was very interesting and something that struck me as very, look, very forward-looking and, um.
Great.
Really like a thoughtful, smart thing to be, and the way, the way that he talked about how they had in, sort of unexpectedly prepared for COVID. Like, that was a real, that was a powerful example of, you know, what happens when you are, um, you're in a job and you are, you know, um, conversant with what needs to happen and looking forward to solve problems ahead of time. That was a strong, yeah, that was a strong answer.
And it was something he had.
Yeah.
It was internal to him, it wasn't something he kinda off the cuff.
Yeah, something that he did.
He's done the research, he's done, he's read the articles and whatnot, so.
Yeah.
Done, yeah. Gary, you wanna make a comment?
Uh, no, I, more, more on just, I think he's, um, you know, it's a double-edged sword. We, we wanna grow from within. I think, um, this, our board especially, is, speaks to that a lot, but we wanna get to a point where all these departments were promoted from within, uh, where we don't have to continue to go outside, right? Um, but at the same time, that's why the question I asked about Steel was, you know, the challenges managing a department that he left. Um, there are challenges with that. Anyone that's been promoted within an organization knows that, um, but I think he's up for the challenge. He's said the right things. Uh, I, I do think he's respected, um, by the union and, and other firefighters, so I, uh, I think he can use that to his advantage, um, to, to work with them and create a very strong team, so, uh, I, I think that's, that's really all I have to say regarding, uh, why I, why I was leaning towards Steel.
The other thing I'll add to that, if I may, is, uh, you kinda led me down the path. Steel, not only did he say he's, he does a lot of mentorship and, and, um, stuff across the state, and, um, I think he's done that with some folks on our department already. I think that would be, um, Sean Coffey being a relatively new deputy, I think, Steel's 10 years of experience as a chief, knowing the community and, and really knowing, seeing this department, a lot of those folks grow within our department, I think that would be, uh, a good path for Sean relative to the succession plan, Gary, that you are referencing, um, you know, promoting from within. I think that, um, and I'm not saying that John wouldn't be a good, a good mentor to the deputy, but I, I just think that, uh, it, it kind of aligns nicely. So it seems as though we have a, a consensus and, am I right? So Gary, do you wanna take the lead? Do you want me to just keep?
Oh, please continue. Go ahead, Michael.
All right. So you got something up behind me? Thank you.
Move the select board make a conditional offer of employment to Steel McCurdy for the interim permanent fire chief, position pending, successful contract negotiations with the select board and/or their designee, and pending a successful background check, reference check, drug alcohol test, psychological exam, and fitness for duty evaluation.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mark, seconded by Matthew. I'll do a roll call vote. Mark?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chuck's in favor. So it's 5-0. So folks will be back, uh, at 7:25-ish. Thank you. Okay, thank you for your patience, folks. We, uh, did have some, some items to take care of in executive session, so I apologize for our tardiness. Um, next up on the agenda, well, actually, before we go into that, we have done the Pledge of Allegiance already, so we do have, um, organization and reading of the mail. Also.
Okay.
Something that's.
Currible, yeah.
I can, you know, we'll come back to that, I'll just move on since they've been waiting.
Yeah, I think that'd be better. They've been waiting.
Um, we do have a public hearing to address alleged sale of an alcoholic beverage to a person less than 21 years of age in violation of 204 CMR. I think this is all red mic. That's a summary. Um, so at this point, we're gonna open that public hearing. I, I hereby open this hearing, which is being held pursuant to master and law, chapter 138, sections 23 and 64. Uh, number one, to determine whether J.Ram Kabir Incorporated DBA Littleton Convenience located in 12 Jennifer Street in Littleton violated the law on January 6th, 2024 as follows. 204 CMR 2 dot 052 permitting an illegality on the licensed premises to wit general law, chapter 138, section 34, the sale or delivery of an alcoholic beverage to a person less than 21 years of age, and Select Board's policy two, which requires compliance with general law, chapter 138. And two, consider potential discipline as a result of alleged violations. Uh, next week, number two, confirm attendance with, that's my own script.
I'm here representing the.
Attorney, okay.
Littleton Convenience. If you wanna hear a little bit of the first.
Um, well, let me, um, so you're here, so, um, Attorney Brooke, let's see.
You're probably gonna hear the facts first.
So let me, yes, let me just to, to kinda start it off, let me begin to hear anybody submitting the following documents as part of, um, the record of this proceeding. Um, but the owner is here as well.
Yes, the owner.
Correct, but you're representing them for this matter. Um, so the notice of the hearing dated March 4th, 2024, Littleton Police Department Report 24 dash 31 dashes OF, approved date of January 28th, 2024, Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission Hearing Decision dated December 7th, 2017. Um, and actually, I would ask Detective O'Donohue if, uh, you'd come forward, uh, Detective Patrick O'Donohue, Special Services Detective for the Littleton Police Department, uh, please share, um, what occurred on 26 January, 2024, please.
Thank you. Good evening. Again, Detective Pat O'Donohue from Littleton Police Department. I'm assigned to the Special Services Division and also one of the alcohol enforcement agencies within the town of Littleton. We, on December 20th, 2023, the, the police department received, not anonymous, but a, a concern from a town resident that overheard his son's friends talking about where they can buy alcohol, where they've been buying alcohol. And it was, uh, two locations. One was Pauline's and, and Air, and the other one was Littleton Convenience. Um, with conversation with the chief of police, also my sergeant, detective sergeant Pablo Fernandez, we decided to, uh, monitor at least our town, Littleton Convenience. Um, myself and Detective Wodzinski on Thursday, January 25th, arrived in that area of the convenience store and set up in soft cars. We have cars that aren't cruisers, aren't explorers, just regular cars that the department utilizes. We stayed there for about three to four hours with no, no violation seen at that time. Uh, the next day, on Friday, February 26th, again, we took the time to arrive in the area with soft cars, and at approximately fifth, uh, three, uh, three thirty-five hours, um, we observed, I observed the gray Ford Explorer enter the, the parking lot of the Littleton Convenience. The car, uh, what drew to my attention was the, uh, the infamous Tiger Paw for the high schools and the high school kids. So the car pulled into parking lot, I immediately saw, uh, a youth, younger male exit the vehicle. I immediately pulled in the parking lot, ran the plate as fast as I could, and also, uh, Detective Wodzinski, who's also the SRO, I asked her, once the plate came back, is she familiar with the name? She said she was. I said, is she familiar with anybody that's younger than 21 from that residence? She said there's two sons, high school age, um, that operates that car, being their father's car. Um, the car had left, we weren't able to get a cruiser in the area at that time. Prior to the car leaving, the, um, younger male walked out with two 12-packs, uh, Miller Lite and Corona, and placed them in his car. I gave that information to Detective Wodzinski. We were unable to stop the car, immediately. submitting the following documents as part of the record of this proceeding. But the owner is here as well.
Yes, the owner.
Correct, but you're representing them for this matter. So the notice of the hearing dated March 4, 2024, Littleton Police Department report 24-31-OF, approved date of January 28, 2024, Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission hearing decision dated December 7, 2017. And actually, I would ask Detective O'Donohue, if you'd come forward, Detective Patrick O'Donohue, Special Services Detective for the Littleton Police Department, please share what occurred on 26 January 2024. Please.
Thank you. Good evening. Again, Detective Pat O'Donohue from Littleton Police Department. I'm assigned to the Special Services Division and also one of the alcohol enforcement agencies within the town of Littleton. We, on December 20, 2023, the police department received, not anonymous, but a concern from a town resident that overheard his son's friends talking about where they can buy alcohol, where they've been buying alcohol. And it was a, two locations. One was Pauline's in Air, and the other one was Littleton Convenience. With conversation with the chief of police, also my sergeant, Detective Sergeant Pablo Fernandez, we decided to monitor at least our town, Littleton Convenience. Myself and Detective Wodzinski on Thursday, January 25, arrived in that area of the convenience store and set up in soft cars. We have cars that aren't cruisers, aren't explorers, just regular cars that the department utilizes. We stayed there for about three to four hours with no violation seen at that time. The next day, on Friday, February 26, again, we took the time to arrive in the area with soft cars. And at approximately 3:35 hours, we observed, I observed the great Ford Explorer enter the parking lot of the Littleton Convenience. The car, what drew to my attention was the infamous Tiger Paw for the high schools and the high school kids. So the car pulled into the parking lot. I immediately saw a youth, younger male exit the vehicle. I immediately pulled in the parking lot, ran the plate as fast as I could. And also Detective Wodzinski, who's also the SRO, I asked her once the plate came back if she's familiar with the name. She said she was. I said, is she familiar with anybody that's younger than 21 from that residence? She said there's two sons, high school age, that operates that car, being their father's car. The car had left. We weren't able to get a cruiser in the area at that time. Prior to the car leaving, the younger male walked out with two 12-packs, Miller Lite and Corona, and placed them in his car. I gave that information to Detective Wodzinski. We were unable to stop the car immediately after leaving Littleton Convenience. She said she knew the address of where they lived. We checked that address. She then was aware of where one of the, one of the individuals had worked, which was the Great Road Kitchen. We went up there, approached the young high school senior. He was 100% cooperative with us, admitted to walking in, admitted to have purchased there before, and we retrieved the alcohol and secured it for evidence. Several hours later, after we had talked to the young individual, we secured the alcohol. We did go back, I did go back to Littleton Convenience and spoke with, attempted to speak to the clerk. He didn't understand English, but he was very cooperative, gave the phone, called his boss. I talked to Mr. Patel. Mr. Patel was extremely cooperative also in speaking with him, very apologetic, knew there was a mistake made. And he actually had told me that he believes that he was the one that may have possibly sold the alcohol to the youth. Again, we haven't had, there was one other violation in 2017. We've done stings since then. There's been no other issues with this convenience store besides this one since 2017. The, we decided not to charge the high school student, but the SRO brought it to the principal's attention, and he was probably punished more than Air Justico would have punished him. So, yeah, he was big at the sports, and he took a punishment. He took a beating. So we didn't criminally charge him. And I'm available for any questions or comments or?
When you spoke with the individual, the youth.
Yes.
And/or with the owner, did either of them mention that the individual was asked for ID, or whether or not the individual was asked?
We asked, we asked the youth. He said he was not carded.
Was not carded.
Whether it was, because he'd been in there before, and maybe they got to know him. That's a possibility, but he, at the time, said he was not carded.
Okay. Does the board have any questions for Detective O'Donohue?
You said there have been no incidents since 2017. That was when they just had the beer and wine license?
That's correct.
And they just recently got the full alcohol license?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Just to clarify. Thank you.
I had a question. You had mentioned that the, the young man said he had purchased there before. Did you mean that earlier, this one incident, or do you mean he was referring to other instances other than this incident?
From, from how we took it, he has purchased alcohol there on other occasions.
Mr. Wilson, any questions for Detective O'Donohue?
No, not at this time.
Are there any questions from the attorney or from the licensee for Detective O'Donohue?
No, no questions.
So Attorney Burke, I'm assuming that you want to make some sort of statement, but I did ask that if the licensee has any witnesses or wishes to make a statement, to please do so, and.
Sure.
I'm sure you're gonna be doing that as behalf.
Yeah. Well, first of all, thank you. It's nice to be back here again. Unfortunately, it's for this type of a situation as opposed to, you know, the other times that I've been here, been a little more pleasant. I see that the chairperson, chairman is still on vacation. Oh, no, he's not. There you are.
No, he's on vacation still.
I can say that there's a great deal of remorse going on here right now, and I'll explain that to you. And I, I'm gonna jump right into the concern that was raised by, by you regarding the, the issue of, you know, past history with this individual. I raised that to him. I thought that that was probably the most concerning thing for us and for you to be concerned about having any type of a history like this. So I discussed that with them, and I can tell you that, you know, they're not much of, of, of any type of hiding this or anything like that. It's just he's, he's, he owns it. He is accepting responsibility for it. He's not trying to in any way shy away from, from the incident. There's really, with the strict liability, there's no, there's no excuse for it. I tried, I explained that to him as well. He did say that there, that it was a memory thing with him and that he believed in the past, that there was some resentment, and that, and that made it okay for him in the future because he had a memory of it. But it doesn't. So with that being said, Mr. Patel agrees that he is the one, because at the time that the sale was made, he was at the counter. So he's been doing this now for 10 years, and this is really his first blemish dealing with this type of an issue. I can tell you, when he came to my office, he was very upset. And I'll, I'll talk about that at the very end, because he has an interesting story behind the whole ordeal, I should say, or the whole, or his whole past. But since the new license was granted, just seems like a month ago, they have not begun to sell the all alcohol at this point for a couple of reasons. One is they have gone out and purchased a new register that's going to be delivered, and anything that is on the register and quoted as alcohol requires an identification before the cash register will open. So, so that's a process that they have instituted. Since this incident has come about, and they have also decided that they are purchasing a scanner for all fake identifications, so that, so that if anything's presented and it's questionable with an individual that has, you know, looks like they're under the age of 30 or 40, they are going to scan the identification. My dealing has been with some other licenses in Boston and in Worcester, that some of the IDs still get past the scanning, believe it or not. There's this company out of China that issues these licenses to these kids. They all seem to be Connecticut licenses because they're easier to forge than they are for the Massachusetts ones. But believe it or not, that these, they have these, the ability to get around these scanning. And even if that happens, an individual still would be responsible for it, because it's a strict liability law. The other thing is, with all of that said, I think they've decided to take their new license and this whole thing to another level of approaching this whole thing. I think they have a pretty good track record. I think Mr. Patel, who's the one that sold the alcohol, is, you know, he has a decent track record of 10 years of, of unblemished, I would, I would say, you know, a very good track record in that sense. But, but I would, I do want to tell you about when he came to my office, to give you this, how serious he's, he's taken this whole thing. He comes to my office with my new associate who's sitting behind me, Danielle Burke, Valcourt.
No relation.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I know. It happened, changed the sign. Extremely humble. Immediately owned, owned the mistake. And he was very emotional about it, which is, I've, I've had some clients that kind of were a little more rough around the edges and, and especially in the Boston area, that, you know, they feel like they're being picked on sometimes because they end up in front of the licensing board more than they'd like to admit. But he was emotional, and he's, he's, he's dealing with some high blood pressure now because of this. He was, he's, he has issues of being not able to sleep and eat. And he's telling me these things in a way that are very genuine. So I'm compelled to share this with the board, because I think it's important for you to understand where he's coming from and how, and how seriously he takes this. You know, he was, he mentioned to me that he was worried being worn down from this whole thing, and he's very concerned about it. He was very glassy-eyed about it and very emotional in that sense. And, you know, I was kind of taken aback by this whole thing. And, and he tells me that before he came to the United States in India, he was a school teacher, and that he has two children that are the age of these individuals that are alleged to come in and purchase, notice I say alleged, who comes in to purchase. And he was also a principal for seven years. So I can, all of a sudden, I can understand how he's, he's takes this whole thing very seriously. And although it doesn't excuse what happened, I, I, I think that you have an individual who's extremely remorseful about this whole thing, very humbled by it, and, and takes this whole thing very seriously. And I think, to their credit, what they've done is gone out and get this new register, and now because of this have this new scanner that they are going to get hopefully in the next week or so. And they're not even going to start doing the all alcohol license process until they get these new technologies in the building and up and running. So I'm gonna ask the board, if you can, to be as lenient as you can with him and, and, and the business, because I think he's been a good partner in the community. I think you've all, in the past, acknowledged that and recognized that, that people do make mistakes, and that we hope that the board will acknowledge that and, and try to take a, you know, a fair and equitable step towards the whole thing. And if you have any questions, be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Attorney Burke. Any questions from the board?
Nope.
Karen?
Burke?
No, good. Gary?
I don't believe so at this time. I, I just, I don't have much of a history on this. Chuck, I know you've got the longest tenure on the board of these type of things, if you've had, I mean, so like this, since your tenure.
Have we had a violation?
Yeah.
The one that I recall.
And it was in my understanding, did you mention, Attorney Burke, that the, these new registers are expected to arrive when?
Within the next week or so. They're hoping to get them sooner than later because they want to start selling the all alcohol.
Thank you.
Karen, did you have any?
I would just like you to reconcile, please, the idea that this was a singular incident with the fact that this incident came to the town's awareness because of a tip that this is where you go if you're underage and you want alcohol.
I, I, you know, beyond saying that we own it and, and that it's, it is what it is, I can't dispute the fact that the, the officers, that they did their job, they had a conversation with this individual, and that's what he represented to them. I'm not going to question that. I did bring it up to them when, in our discussion with it. And he, he knew the individual, and I think it was because he, he knew the individual previously. And I think that it may have been, I don't know, he represents to me that he believes that there was something that was presented before that passed muster, and that that's why he, this particular individual was able to come back. My understanding is it's not a group of individuals or underage kids, but just this particular single person.
Any other clarifications or?
No.
Kind of down that same, that same line, you used the word alleged. I mean, Mr. Patel admitted.
Right.
Admitted that he had sold to him before, and that he wasn't carded because he remembered that the individual had been in before. I mean, the individual looks younger than 21 by my estimation, and my, I, if there were other people in, in his store that have sold to this individual or other individuals, which is possible because Mr. Patel doesn't work 24/7, doesn't work all the hours at their open. So there's the possibility that this individual or others have, have purchased there illegally as well. So the term allegedly kind of.
I was more of a humorous way. I didn't mean it as.
I hope so.
It's the attorney's.
Force of habit.
vernacular.
I don't always get you dry humor.
Try it in a criminal court.
Yeah, right. All right. So I do appreciate the fact that, that all that you presented and the, you know, the steps that the license holder is, is looking to take. Any other questions from, from members of the board? It is a public hearing, so I'd ask if there are any, any questions from anybody in the public. Mr. Sanders, if you please come forward. Attorney Burke, if you don't mind. Yeah, thank you.
George Sanders, 672 Great Lloyd. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a statement here with regard, I go over there and buy scratch tickets quite often there. The Jim has always been nice and pleasant there. I'm glad to hear the pull that the police had with him, and also with the individuals that violated the law. And I'm glad that our police department pursued it to the point that they went to the kitchen and retrieved the alcohol that they had purchased there, or that individual had purchased there, because it's important that we keep our young adults safe out here in this community. And we don't want anyone to get hurt behind alcohol, because it's very easy to happen if they get out there and start drinking and playing around out there. I think that even though there's a lot of remorse that, that the attorney have conveyed here tonight with regards to this on the individual, but I think that we have to be stern with our enforcement of violations. And I think that you're going to have to ensure with them getting this cash register where if alcohol is involved, it won't let them proceed with the transaction until there's a check of identification for age-wise, and to even scan the ID that they're presenting to make sure there's a valid ID, which I think that is a big plus in this particular situation here, that if this is the second time and they're taking that type of proactive action here to eliminate such things happening in the future, I think, you know, that is a good thing for them. And I think overall that you have to set the example and let everybody know they've got alcohol licenses in this town. You cannot violate and sell to minors, period. You're going to answer to us. Now, he asked you to be lenient. I don't know what that meant. I think that you have to be firm in what you do, and whatever you come up with and say this, different situations will apply based on the violation. So I think that you have to send a message, not only to him, but to others in this town, that if you come before us, we're gonna treat you fair, but you're gonna pay the cost. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has any questions or would like to speak? Okay, thank you. No further questions from members?
Nope.
Just, I'm not sure who to pose this question to, but relative to security cameras, I don't know if either Attorney Burke or Detective O'Donohue, as far as security cameras at the store.
I don't have a bomb speaker or attorney counsel who wants to speak. That's what I said. There are, there are cameras. They're on a six-day rotation. So there's six days of combat, but he did look at it, and he, he saw that, he did not ask for the ID. So it was there. I mean, if he had saved it, we would have given it to the police department if they, if they asked for it.
Thank you. Detective O'Donohue, anything to add? Thank you. Detective O'Donoghue, anything to add?
I want to, I want to, I want to say we did ask for it, but they said they weren't working. And I can be an error. I'm just trying to read the report real quick. That's just one of the questions we always ask if they have video surveillance. Again, it was a tough language barrier, so, you know, I, I apologize for that. But I just don't have it.
That's okay.
In my court, so, again, it was tough trying to communicate that night. But again, if they have video cameras, I always, I think, like we've talked in the past with many alcohol establishments, I think that they're essential to especially investigations.
It protects both, you know, all parties, really.
They keep everybody, they keep everybody honest, absolutely, absolutely.
All right. So, but you're saying that you asked, you believe you asked?
A gentleman that couldn't understand me, just tried to talk to you. So again, I apologize to you, but that's what we asked, right, when we were in the...
But that would have been immediately. So I would just offer that the licensee probably at that point in time should have maybe taken a peek at it and offered it up then. But that's the thing, you know, there, it doesn't, doesn't...
Again, he did, when I, when I did speak to Mr. Patel, he admitted that everything that went on, everything that I stated was in fact true, so, as well as the counsel who mentioned. So there wasn't a disagreement with me and him, at least that night, that there was an alcohol sold to somebody.
Yes.
And I also want to add, just to the board and to the town, that this is probably the first time I've ever heard of someone going above and beyond buying. This, this stuff is very expensive, it's thousands of dollars, but the register says with the, with the car check, because we, again, we've gone through everything else. So I, kudos to him for taking that stuff to, to rectify that situation for him in his court.
Thank you, Detective. All right. So there's no further questions?
Do we have to close the hearing or just keep going?
Yeah, so, yeah, the board has already deliberated. It's just a question, what action we want to take now.
Yeah. I have a recommendation on this. We have, I think Dolan's used to see the same devices, correct? I know when you can't, I can't purchase alcohol at Dolan's unless shown my license.
It just, it alerts the clerk. It doesn't, you don't scan it, but it alerts the clerk to type in the date of birth.
Right.
At Dolan's, at least. I don't know what the systems are.
Yeah, so it's a different type of system, but, I mean, I, I, my recommendation would be to suspend the license until the, the new system is up and running.
All right. So Mr. Wilson's recommendation is suspend the license?
So do we have to, should we go through these in order?
Do we need to do the motion that we believe there's an existence of a violation before we decide what the...
I would recommend that.
Okay.
So move the select board to find sufficient evidence that on January 26, 2024, J. Ram Kabir, doing business at Littleton Convenience located at 12 Jennifer Street in Littleton, sold alcoholic beverages to a person under 21 years of age in violation of 204 CMR 205- section 2, permitting an illegality on the license premises to wit chapter 138, section 34, and select board's policy 2, which requires compliance with general law chapter 138.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. It's a roll call vote. Mark?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
I'm in favor as well, so it's 5-0 vote. So we're in agreement that there was a violation. So moving forward, now we deliberate on how we handle the violation. So the penalty, essentially. So Gary's proposed that we suspend until the new system is in place?
Are there any guidelines that we should have to be following on this, or this is entirely up to us?
This is pretty much an update.
Yeah, it's in our court.
Do we not need a date certain, though?
Yeah. Can, do you have any estimation of when, I mean, I know that with...
I was just asking that question, and he said that it could be in the next couple of days, but it could be past the weekend into the middle of next week.
Okay, so it is within the week. But, all right. Well, I'll just offer my thoughts. If there is, I, I believe that there should be some sort of a suspension, and I think that whatever that suspension is, if it's less than a week, should include a weekend. I think that sends a very serious message to the owner, but I also think that if...
To other establishments.
Yeah, to other establishments, to the public, and to it, I would recommend that a sign be put on the door saying that we are not, we're open, but we can't sell alcohol during this week, frankly, because we can, we can help you craft the language, or we can provide the, the sign that we put on the door that would say, our, our alcohol license has been suspended until time certain, you know. So, and we do have a couple of kind of recommended thoughts that we would do. And as far as the ABCC from the state level, with just from the little research that we've done in, in speaking with town council, they've seen anything from six days to 10 days or, or longer. And I would say that, appreciate the, you know, the fact that you've been proactive in taking care of this. I would ask that regardless of what we do, that we confirm that the cameras are working in addition to putting the systems in place. And the other thing that I would put out, well, my, my timeline, just so we have something to deliberate, is three-day suspension, which would include a Friday and Saturday. And we would hold three days in abeyance. So it's essentially six days, but three of them would be paid now, and by putting three days in abeyance, if there is a second violation, those additional three days would be added on to whatever punishment we decided for your second violation. So let's just say a hypothetical, if we agreed upon three days of three days in abeyance today, and then there was a second violation, and we said it was going to be 21 days, it would be 24 days, because those three days from abeyance would be, would be activated for a time certain as well.
I was just going to ask that for a time certain.
So I've been doing all the talking.
I think six days with three days suspended or in abeyance is fine, starting Friday and running through Monday, so the 15th to the 18th would be my recommendation.
Any thoughts, or?
I was actually leaning towards being more lenient, given the track record, and I, I think I'm encouraged that everyone in this room seems to be, seems to want the same thing. I think that all of us are keenly aware of the, the downside of teenagers drinking and driving, and I think that if anything happened in this town and we had known about this problem and not done something about it, I couldn't live with myself. So I'm fine with three days of suspension. I think that your comment about sending a message to other establishments in this town is very important, and I think that we should take this very seriously. So, yes, three days with three days held in abeyance, confirmation that the registers are installed, the scanners when they're installed, and some clarification on the cameras, and just to make sure that we have a, a plan from the, from the, from the owner about how, you know, what are the policies going forward to make sure this doesn't happen again.
As to the leniency, I feel as though this is providing some leniency for the fact that, you know, Karen had alluded to, this came to the attention of, of the Littleton Police Department through the grapevine.
Sure. No, that's fair.
So although nobody was caught on either side, whether it was the underage person purchasing or the, the, any establishment, you know, selling it to an underage person. The other question I'd, I'd offer, counsel, is has any of the, have any of the employees gone through Maspac, which is the equivalent of tips for a restaurant?
Maspac, I know they all have done tips.
They're, they're all tips certified?
Yes.
Okay. I think that goes a little deeper than Maspac. I think Maspac is for package stores, frankly, whereas tips is for servers, essentially. But if, if you're able to identify, it's more for not selling to people that are inebriated, but there's also things in there about underage and things like that. So I think just a presentation of whoever, those certi, those certificates, something that we would probably want posted with our license, with the town's license, have your tips certificates for your employees posted as well. And I think that's pretty common practice for most of the drinking establishments, the, the restaurants or, you know, bathrooms and that kind of thing. All right. So as far as the motion is concerned, we kind of crafted it to this one, right?
So Gary, are you okay with this?
Oh, yeah. Gary?
Yeah, I would, I would ask that when the new system is up, that Detective O'Donoghue or the department, someone in the department actually verifies if it's operation and if it's working correctly.
We'll follow Mark and with, working with that, that is...
Detective O'Donoghue is, is more than willing to work with the, with the owner and make, you know, get that confirmation for us. Will you be okay with starting this Friday and going through to Monday?
So it would be Friday, Saturday, Sunday closed, Monday open?
The three-day suspension would be can't sell Friday, can't sell Saturday, can't sell Sunday.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think we're being very lenient, but I, I was thinking a longer term than three days. So if that's the will of the board, I'm okay with that.
What?
I was thinking more like five, with five held in abeyance. If, if the standard in other areas is 10, then I think five and five held back is, however, having seen what they're planning to do.
Yeah.
So...
And I, unfortunately...
So we have these two motions, basically, one with a period of time and dates, and then the, the part three with the conditions. I'd rather do them separately, if that's the will of the rest.
So we just fill in the dates for, so it'll be the 15th to the 18th, right?
Probably through the 17th, which is the Sunday.
Through the 17th?
Yeah, through the 17th.
If we write it that way, you understand those saying that you're unable, you have to turn over your license and get it back next Monday. So...
I just want to point out that it's St. Patrick's Day this weekend.
So that'll send a good message, then.
Yeah, it would send a good message, but I hate to say it, but it's a high-volume weekend everywhere. And I'm, I'm just saying that, that rather than two additional days that are three days over this weekend, it's likely to be probably more of a six to 10-day suspension, to be honest with you.
I think it's unfortunate timing, and it actually, there was, there was discussion with town council about some towns actually picking the days and going with the Tuesday and Wednesday before Thanksgiving and days leading up to Christmas. So I would, I would, you know, just before the 4th of July. So we literally can pick and choose any days. And for us, we'd rather get it done.
I understand.
With our stipulation that it being, I mean, I suppose we could do Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and you could try to make it up on Sunday if the board's amenable to that. But, I mean, I don't mean to be callous or cold, but it's kind of like Beretta used to say, don't do it.
Don't do this, man.
Can't do a crime if you can't do a crime.
You could always pick the next week.
We could. We, Mr. Wilson wants the license to be suspended until your system's in place. So that would be effective immediately until the system gets...
I think we're going to stick with this weekend.
The dates that...
Yeah.
I appreciate it, and you're advocating for your client, and I, I would, I think this is a good message sent, but we also don't want to do a 10-day or something like that, because we appreciate the fact this is a small business that has been a good member of the community, and I think that we are, we are offering a relatively lenient...
It's appreciated. I'm sitting here listening. I'm, I'm agreeing.
Okay.
I just wanted everyone to know St. Patrick's Day is coming.
Did you know that, Detective? Just going to have to have some specials on Wednesday and Thursday. Remind all your customers, your old age customers.
What's your last name again?
Buy their stuff on Wednesday and Thursday.
Anything you can throw out. If you tell anyone said that, somebody's why you hired me.
Okay.
So, so I would say, yeah.
Yeah, maybe.
Move the select board pursuant to Master in Law, chapter 138, sections 23 and 64, suspends a section 15 package store license held by J. Ram Kabir, doing business at Littleton Convenience located at 12 Jennifer Street in Littleton for a period of three days to be served consecutively...
With three days held in abeyance?
With three days held in abeyance, sorry.
Sorry, I think it's six days with three days held in abeyance.
Okay, six days with three days held in abeyance, to be served consecutively from March 15th to March 17th, 2024. And further stating, during the period of such suspension, the licensee must conspicuously post notice on the door of the stash management, the doors to the cooler holding any alcohol, and by the register, a sign informing patrons that its liquor license has been suspended due to the determination that the licensee sold alcoholic beverages to a person under 21 years of age, which signs shall be provided by the town.
Second.
Made by Mark, seconded by Matthew. Mark?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Gary, sorry. And I'm in favor as well. Just muted himself. All right. So that, that's...
Does that have to be a time limit on the time of abeyance over three days?
Oh, so when would the, when would the abeyance expire?
One year, a year or two years or something like that.
One year from, let's do it from Friday, from the day that the first suspension starts.
One, a one-year period for the three days in abeyance?
Are you okay with that? I think that's typically, we would, well, it's just, I think that's, I think that was the intention.
It doesn't really matter, because we pick arbitrary time periods anyway, right?
Oh, we could say that they last until the license is renewed.
Which is, which is less time.
Maybe less time.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Okay.
Okay.
Well, did, I mean, let's discuss it, Karen.
No, I mean, I, I, I think a second violation in, you know, 366 days is just as...
Egregious.
You know, egregious as a one on 364 days, but I understand the, you know, the need for certainty and under the law and...
Just keep in mind that we, we're the ones that impose the punishment in 366 days after, after that expires.
So how about till the end of '25? That's 19, 21 months, whatever, right?
What's the pleasure of the board?
That's two licenses. That's another license renewal cycle.
We're going to, I, I don't think it matters. We're going to impose...
It's three days.
We're going to impose a penalty if this happens again. I don't think it matters how long.
Let me get it.
I agree with Matthew on that. I mean, a second violation within a certain period of time, I mean, we would impose that harsher penalty regardless. So till the next, you know, till the next license, it's fine.
Technically speaking, we could impose this as the second violation, because the first violation was in 2017. And so I, I think the one-year...
That's fine.
As amended. Mark?
Aye.
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 Gary?
Aye.
All right. So that'll be March 15th, 25. Better?
Okay.
Not only to make sure that...
We had, we had discussed it prior, so, no, I appreciate you bringing it back up and keeping this honest. All right. So relative to the, the second motion that we kind of put out there...
So we have suggestions on conditions.
Yeah.
One is that your Maspac are equivalent certified, which they say they are.
Tips, yeah.
Requiring that within, with, requiring that and requiring employees to have that is a no-brainer and something they already are doing. is a no-brainer and something they already are doing.
So we're going to basically codify that, and I just had that conversation, saying, make sure that you're posting those, but, yeah, so we'll just...
The second is the license shall be, licensee shall be present to the Select Board as satisfactory plan to ensure that alcohol will not be sold to individuals. I think Attorney Burke basically outlined a plan. Unless we want a formal written declaration of that plan, I don't know that we...
If I may, one suggestion would be, you mentioned that Detective O'Donoghue could go in and confirm that the system is up, running, and functioning correctly, so maybe, you know, that the request could be that, that the owner work cooperatively with the Littleton Police Department and that correspondence be provided back to the board to let you know that the system is up and running correctly.
So that's, okay, so that's like number three, which says using card scanners, right?
Mm-hmm. You probably, it's, it's, it's three with, with the qualifier that it'd be checked on.
Right, so I'm questioning whether we need two.
I don't think so.
Or not. That was my...
Probably not, no, I mean, it's three with the qualifier.
This hearing in and of itself, and the minutes from this hearing are essentially that plan.
Yeah. I mean, the plan would basically be Attorney Burke sending a letter saying, "What is that?" So unless we really feel the need for that, I don't...
No, I think we just, we craft the motion just to...
Okay, so one and three?
Yeah, but you can kind of massage one.
How do you want to move? So one says all current employees of the establishment, establishment is...
Just go with it.
Okay.
Just go with that's what I'm...
Okay. So you're saying tips is stronger than Maspac?
Tips is different than Maspac because it has to do with identifying people that are inebriated, so not selling to be, but, I mean, it's, it's not selling to people at a restaurant table or over the bar, that kind of thing. Maspac is more, you know, identifying people that come to the register for off-premise.
Okay. Move the Select Board, condition the Section 15 package store license held by J.R.M. Kavara doing business as Littleton Convenience located at 12 Jennifer Street in Littleton on the following conditions. All current employees of the establishment that sell alcohol shall complete a training for intervention process premises alcohol-serving training course or the beverage alcohol training program provided by Maspac or an equivalent program approved by the Select Board by April 30th?
Yeah.
2024 and be retrained prior to the certificate expiration. New employees shall be trained within 30 days of hiring. Copy of training certificates shall be provided to the Select Board within 30 days of completion of any training.
Second. Made by Mark, seconded by Matthew, with Karen's amendment. Mark?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chuck's in favor as well. Okay, so now it's unanimous?
Move the Select Board authorize the town administrator to send notice of the Select Board's decision to the licensee with a copy to the alcoholic beverages control commission.
Second.
Made by Mark, seconded by Matthew, with Karen's amendment. Mark?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chuck's in favor as well. Okay, so now it's unanimous?
Move the Select Board authorize the town administrator to send notice of the Select Board's decision to the licensee with a copy to the alcoholic beverages control commission.
Second.
Made by Mark, seconded by Matthew, with Karen's amendment. Mark?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chuck's in favor as well. Okay, so now it's unanimous?
Move the Select Board authorize the town administrator to send notice of the Select Board's decision to the licensee with a copy to the alcoholic beverages control commission.
Second.
Made by Mark, seconded by Matthew, Mark?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chuck's in favor. Okay, so, just to be clear, Attorney Burke, you clear?
Any questions?
As to where we're at and what our expectations are? Okay. Okay, any questions, please call the town administrator's office and we can clear it up. But there will be basically a four-figure license for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday of this weekend.
Thank you.
Turned into the office. The license physically has to come to the town administrator's office for either Thursday afternoon or first thing Friday morning.
Okay.
So do it first thing Friday morning, just because if we close at nine o'clock, they're not there.
They'll hang around the door.
All right.
Close the hearing?
Yes.
Please.
Move to close the hearing?
Second.
Made by Mark, seconded by Matthew, Mark?
Aye.
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 Gary?
Aye.
Chuck's in favor, so the hearing is now closed. We'll move on with the agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate everybody working together on this, and hopefully lessons learned, and just, you know, keep our kids safe.
Thank you very much.
You bet, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. That's one of the girls that's using this thing. Yeah, so, do you want to, do you have any mail that...
Look at Brian out here. He's got young kids. He doesn't want to get into it.
We're jumping up to, we're jumping to number five. Just a little bit...
Good evening, thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here.
Brian Forbes, Vertex Companies, OPM for the town of Wilton, for both of your senior center project and the proposed renovations at 36 King Street. We'll start with the senior center update. I'm probably sure you've seen that the campus is starting to take shape here, driving into the town hall. We've mobilized onto the site. I'd like to go through some of the schedule milestones that we have, go through our budget update, some of the construction schedule in progress that we have. At our last update, that I believe I provided in November, December, we talked about some of the backup power options that we had for this project. I wanted to give you an update on where we are there, and then wrap things up with a proposed groundbreaking ceremony for the town and to get any input from the board. Next slide, please. So this is a schedule that I showed last update, and I wanted to kind of just elaborate onto it and add on from where we are to kind of highlight and showcase what we've done in the past years. We just started mobilizing, and you're starting to see the fruits of everyone's labor. Since our last meeting, we have signed a guaranteed maximum price with our construction manager, Commodore Builders, and what we did once we signed that is because it was in the wintertime, we don't want to waste a lot of the town's money on general, general conditions and overhead and mobilizing onto the site with winter conditions and frozen ground. So we take the opportunity with that time to do a procurement phase, to have all our submittals and all of our coordination done between the contractor and the designer and the consultants, so that we can hit the ground running, which we did on March 1st. Construction is scheduled right now for 13 months to be wrapped up at the end of March 2025, and as you can see, we've begun excavation of the site right now, and I would say probably about 75 to 80% of submittals have now been submitted to the designer for, for review to be sent back. So a lot of the approvals and a lot of the coordination, a lot of the potential change orders have already been shaken out in this project, so that we don't foresee any hurdles throughout the construction process. Next slide, please. Quick budget analysis, on the left is what we had showed at our previous update, and what that was, was the appropriations that got us to this point right now. And to condense everything, I put a quick, a quick graphic on the right to give the current project budget between soft costs, construction costs, and contingencies. Soft costs are made up of project management fees, architect fees, furniture, fixtures, and equipment that will be going into the building. The construction cost is the, the direct contract that we have with our construction manager, and the contingencies are made up of several contingencies, including soft and hard costs. I believe I, I told you guys last time at a previous update that the, the delivery method with the construction manager at risk, with the guaranteed maximum price, everything is open book. There are several allowances that are built into this and several holds that we manage as well, with the hope that at the end of, end of the project, when we close the project out, any remaining allowances or contingencies get turned back over to the town at that point.
Just to stop you real quick there, Brian, the 15-2 is the GMP number?
That's correct.
And that includes some construction contingencies?
Correct. Yeah, there's a, there's some allowances, for example, what we, before they do all of their buyout, they like to hold some allowances and holds on their side of the table, so if they ever hit those, for example, winter conditions. They also have a small allowance for, because of the, the economy that we're in right now, the electrical material is seeing some extreme lead times, and so they wanted to hold some money in case that they needed to expedite any electrical material. Knock on wood, I, I think we've, we're not going to hit any, so that is something that we would be, we'd be expecting back from the town. Some of the schedule milestones since our previous time that we've given you an update, like I said, our GMP was signed by Commodore Builders. There was two things that I did want to bring up to the, to the, to the board here. One was that my previous, previous update, we did have a bid protest on the HVAC filed subbid. The second lowest bidder put a protest in with the attorney general's office, so the project team worked with the attorney general's office. We had a hearing. The attorney generals gave a decision on that. We worked with the town administrator's office and with town council, and per their, per their decision, we ended up going with the second lowest bidder. Fortunate for the town, it was a very small delta in what we had to do. It was to the tune of about $15,000 on a million-dollar contract, so they were very close in contracts, but we wanted to keep in line with the decision of the attorney general's office, and we worked with Commodore as well about executing their contract with their subs. We also last week experienced a lot of rain as we started to, to do our excavation. We had some, some flooding around 7:00 a.m. on last Wednesday or Thursday, I believe it was.
It was Thursday.
Thursday. Very impressed with the site contractor. They did do a great job with the erosion control. Part of the erosion control slid on top of one of the drainage covers, and therefore pooling the water in the library side. So that was rectified within an hour. It was documented, and we make sure that we're providing updates in our stormwater protection plan. Currently also, we're going through a lot of finishes right now. Liz and the COA board have done a lot of review with our design team regarding any of the interior colors and themes that's happening within the building. The architect, LLB Architects, has also provided some exterior renderings with some of the colors and themes. We have been bringing those to the PMBC to provide them updates as decisions are being made. I wanted to ask the board if there was any input or if there's any interest in joining one of the PMBC meetings, if there's any opinions or input that would like to be done in regards to colors or, or finishes that we're doing on the building. It's Liz, she's, she's been doing a great job picking it up.
That's all I was pointing at, Brian.
Practically colorblind when it comes to this, so. We've also been working with a lot of the town vendors. There are a lot of systems that are going to be put in that are purchased by the town, inclusive of audiovisual, security systems, access control, things of that nature. So we also need to hire a tester, a construction tester, to satisfy the structural engineer's statement of inspections, as well as a commissioning agent for this building to make sure that it's operating per the sequence of operations. Next slide.
Before we go, Brian, just a couple of things. So just as it relates to the HVAC subbid protest, we, you know, as Brian pointed out, you know, the, the AG had encouraged us to go with the second bidder, but we don't know whether or not the low bidder will come back to us at some point, which there is still a possibility, so I want to make that clear to the board, that that's still an outstanding matter, should they want to pursue that any further.
Appeal, appeal?
Correct.
Yes, so I don't know if you've heard anything new on that recently, because...
Silence at this point, and with the, with the advice from town council, we proceeded with signing the GMP and proceeding with, proceeding with the contract, as a schedule was a priority at that time.
Right, right, which was the appropriate, appropriate thing to do, but just something for the board to keep in mind, you know, it may, it may be something that, maybe coming back. And then, yeah, the other thing is, you know, where we don't necessarily build new buildings all the time, one of the things that I asked Brian to highlight was, was trying to engage with the board on that last piece in terms of engagement for finishes about colors, furniture, themes. Mark, I don't know what process that was actively followed with, with the library, or if there's some sort of model the board would like to follow, but I just want to make sure that that, you know, that, that whatever process we do have, we all agree on as to how we want to proceed with some of those things.
So with the library, the color of the building was kind of put out to a vote between the trustees and the staff and whoever else and the friends, and, and I still get blamed for the color. I hear it all the time. The interior finishing was more or less left to the staff for the most part. We had some comments on the carpeting and things like that, but it was really, the staff did most of the heavy lifting on that.
Okay, well, I mean, I just want to put this to the board because, you know, you'd hate to go through all of this effort and then the board coming back and saying, gee, we didn't have enough chance or opportunity to provide input on, you know, why was the building fuchsia, you know? So...
Fuchsia, right?
Right. So, and I, and I know that Liz and members of the COA are participating in that process and, and offering that input. I just also want to make sure that, you know, that, and that could be fine, we could continue along that route, and, but I just want to make it clear to the board that, you know, if there is input that you'd like to provide along those lines, the opportunity's there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that would, I have no problem providing input, I don't want to make the decision.
It's also that. It's also that.
How convenient.
On the same, on the same topic as well, I don't want to waste everyone's time picking seven different colors of off-white that we're looking for for the exterior of the building, so.
So one of the problems we had when we were picking the colors from the library is they give you the sample that's about this big and say, what do you think it's going to look like on a building this big? And it's completely impossible to say.
I watch HGTV.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's one thing that we requested the, the design firm to, to give us some exterior renderings with the colors that are chosen. It may not be exact with the software they're using, but at least gives you an idea of what you're going to look at as you walk into the parking lot.
And having some samples so you can look at, like, up against this building and the other buildings would be helpful, too, right? So you can compare and contrast, and so.
Sure, we can do that.
Yeah, and if it's okay, so if that's the case, then we continue to defer to the COA and to Liz on that, but, you know, again, we can maybe check in.
As long as Margie's not picking it, I'm okay.
It's okay.
I think it's just the exterior, I think we would have...
Okay, that's reasonable, okay.
Okay, great. Just a couple pictures of where we are a month into the job here. I believe we're about 9% billed into this job right now, so this is some of our demolition activities, taking down the row of pine trees. We also had to demolish the, the neighbor's barn. We have mobilized inside the residence at this point. It's being well-maintained, all-floor protection, and is a, I've, I've done a good inspection of it, I, they're doing a good job there. We did have Commodore also remove the garage door, that was part of that, in case the town wanted to reuse it. The resident had said he just purchased it, and it was very expensive, and, so we kept it just in case the town wanted, had a use for a garage door.
How does that house compare to a trailer?
Still smells like a construction trailer.
Take your shoes off. Get your slippers lined up.
I did ask the, the construction manager if they were going to decorate it for Christmas with a tree, and then he said yes, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah. One thing I did want to highlight with these pictures as well is that with our onsite presence there every day, we do use a software called Reiken, so we're documenting, probably taking 40 to 50 pictures daily. So if there's any ever question from the board or from the town, we can provide any documentation or, or data from each day that's out there, including man count, weather, and pictures throughout the day.
Just two things, just to reemphasize, having been over to the house, Commodore did a very good job in terms of setting everything up and protecting the flooring, and, and a very good job in terms of setting everything up and protecting the flooring. And then the garage door, we actually have that temporarily at DPW and hope to see, we're going to put that out on muni bid and see if we can get anything for it.
Can't use a transportation?
Good idea.
Well, no, it's a specific size, so you'd have to find someone who, you know, someone out there. We've got a bidding, we basically can put it out to bid for free as a municipality. And so see if we get any bites on it. So that's what Brian was.
And one other thing I wanted to bring up as part of our site work that we're doing here is part of the work that we do, we're always looking for economy or valuing, even though that we're into construction. We had a meeting, I figured his last name, Steve from DPW.
Steve Yama, yes.
And we had a meeting regarding the fill that's onsite. And he informed us that he has a spot for it and he would take the fill that we were excavating because we had to remove about 6,000 cubic yards from this. In doing so, we asked the site contractor for a credit that came to the tune of $36,000 to come back to the town. So that's starting us out on the right foot where our contingency even gets built up a little bit more and we're able to possibly put that back into something at a future ask with the PMBC if something ever is needed.
Get a really nice Christmas tree on that.
Liz, do you have a list of things you want?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. And the fill is being used down at the DPW, LWD site for some backfill purposes. I think it's tied to the sewer discharge site. So it's a win-win for the town to do that.
Great. Next slide. So regarding our backup power inquiry, from my last meeting, I think the charge was to ask our design team and to find out what our options were. Currently, we're an all-electric building with no backup power besides the small UPSs that we have in the building that will get somebody out of the building from a lighting and elevator standpoint. Because the way that the building has been designed, and when I brought this question up, there are no emergency panels or emergency backup panels within the building that are separated from the main distribution panel. If we were to bring in a backup generator to power up the entire building, we could not do the way that it's designed right now without paying for added design fees. We could not selectively pick what we were going to back up if we back up a generator. Therefore, if we were to back up the entire building, we would need a large manual transfer switch that would be on the near our transformer up on Shattuck Street. And the size of the generator that would be needed would probably be a pull behind trailer or a tractor trailer that would need to come up to power said building. So when I found that out with the engineer of record, I've spoken with Ryan, I've actually spoken with Mr. Rambacher a few times about this as well. That may not be the smartest option that we have for backup in this building. It may not, it may put us in a position if we put provisions in for a generator, that size of a generator may not be readily available to bring in to back up this building. So another option we looked into was the use of battery powers or what the options and the technology are for power right now for batteries. The engineer gave us some specs regarding some what looked to be almost sizable Connex boxes that would house exterior batteries that would need to go on the exterior of the structure. Didn't seem like a very great option on where we were. I was forwarded some documentation from Mark and Ryan about a representative that works for a battery vendor. And I think that might be our best plan is that now that our design and construction's underway, rather than going through our designer to try to redesign something that's already been bid on, maybe we bring in a third-party battery vendor that can actually deal with what our design is to possibly give us some proposals or ideas on how we could provide backup power for this building. So that's what I've been doing on the side is just kind of engaging with some of these third parties to bring some options. And maybe we can bring that to the next meeting as the building starts taking shape.
I believe we passed along the information. I think Chuck and Mark, you had talked to someone at the MMA about this. And so passed that along. And I think that sort of brought up the idea of what a third party could do.
So that on the right is the battery. That's right. And then the one on the left is, I didn't size the pictures correctly, but that's the size of the manual transfer switch. That could be about six feet tall. That would have to be out in the front yard is where that would be located. Yeah.
Brian, just let me interrupt you for one second. Mr. Sanders, do you have a question relative to this part of the presentation? Or can you go to the end?
I need to back up before you go there. I want to know what about the tree lumber that they cut down, did we receive any money for that or what happened on that?
Sure. So the demolition of the pine row?
Right.
Excuse me. Yes. So the construction manager went out to four or five site contractors, and the entire bid package is part of that, inclusive of the demolition of the trees. And so it's competitively bid, and any type of credits or givebacks from any type of tree removal is built into their price already. So if the site contractor did not want to take into account any type of credits, maybe come in with a more competitive bid, that's how it's been billed out from the construction manager to his subcontractors. So those trees specifically, because it was in part of the scope as part of the demolition, there would no added credits that come back to the town for that scope of work.
And that vendor took those trees or did whatever they did with them? Okay.
And the same would go for the excess fill. We wanted to keep that in the scope in the event the DPW couldn't take it, but also in the event that sometimes a site contractor has a place to take it and that's advantageous for them. And therefore, they drop their price to be more competitive. And so once we got all our prices and that shook out, we were able to work with the DPW and then get the credit that we were looking for. So to put a bow on our senior center is a groundbreaking ceremony. And it's very common to have a groundbreaking ceremony even after ground has been broken. And we have equipment onsite here, and I have the buy-in from the construction manager and the site contractor they'd be willing to host something and have a piece of equipment and a pile of dirt if it's something that the town would like to entertain. You know, we were thinking maybe towards the end of March, we could help, I would work with Liz about organizing something about. And I've also spoke with Mark Crowery with LCTV if there was something that the town would like to do.
I think it's definitely something we need to address. It just creates the buzz.
For sure. And we do foresee a couple other opportunities to do that. We'll have our beam signing like we like to do. And I think that gives the seniors and the town a good opportunity to be engaged with that and possibly a tree topping ceremony and then the ribbon cutting as well. So, yeah, if this is something you guys like to do, if there are any dates that do not work for you guys, please let me know. And I'll work with Liz and get something out as soon as possible. I did put the invitation that Sam and his staff had put together for the library, and we could do something similar like that.
We could propose some ideas to the board and see what your availability is for maybe that last week in March. And you can get back to us if that works for you.
Yeah, we're trying to do that. And we like the library do a late afternoon thing, so it's after construction.
Absolutely. Yes.
And the last one was at 4:00 PM. So something like that could probably work for everybody. I've got a good number of staff there as well.
Yeah.
Great. Any questions on senior center?
I have one. On the price, did it include the batteries or not include a battery?
Included the PV system, but not the battery system at that. Correct. So that number, inclusive of all, that's all of our alternates, all of our contingencies, that's the soup to nuts there for this project.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Brian.
Not done with me yet. 36 King Street renovations. This one will be relatively brief as we are in a bidding phase right now. I want to give an update on the progress milestone, the work that has been done by our architect to give a little backstory where we are. And then to go through the schedule for the upcoming few weeks as it's going to be pretty busy for prospective bidders. And ultimately, to have a bid in hand with the total project budget for town meeting on May 7. Here's an exterior rendering of the current building. I'm sorry for the, I apologize for the size of the font. So Vertex and LLB, we were contracted at the end of the year in 2023. And the charge was to extend the feasibility study that was done in early 2023 to develop the drawings in order to get a bid in hand for annual town meeting 2024. Once we received those contracts, the design team has worked with Parks and Rec Department as well as the school department on refreshing the programming, as well as engaging their consultants mechanically, electrically, fire protection to make sure things are brought up to code, as well as assessing the building from the exterior and interior conditions. And then we put together a scope list. We've been in review with PMBC about what this is going to do and what is being included and what is not being included from our previous feasibility study. For example, what we were charged for this portion, I'm sorry, for this project to come to town meeting is that we removed any of the site work that was associated the first time around. So this is going to be on the structure itself, on the interior and exterior of the building. We've also done some changes from the past design that was in feasibility in regards to some partitions, some glass partitions that can be removed. We're also working with town departments as well as town vendors. Similar to the senior center, we're working with Nancy Glencross, the IT Director, to upgrade the security systems that's going to be here. I just received a quote from the Shova Security who has done the security in most of the town buildings here to use the backbone of the Brevo system that we have here at Town Hall for security cameras, both interior and exterior, as well as updating the access control for both departments. We'll also be working with any audiovisual packages that need to happen. And Nancy's also working with the phone system as well as any additional data and internet jacks that need to be added into those areas. I did do a quick, and it's not on this slide, I just wanted to verbalize it, some of the scope that this includes that we've presented to the PMBC. For exterior improvements, we have replaced the damaged or rotten soffits, trim and siding. Window sills need to be replaced. We're painting proposed all surfaces on the exterior of the building. Building signage to be replaced with town-approved verbiage and replacing rotting stairs that are on the exterior of the building, on the rear of the building. We also have called out for replacement of the asphalt shingle roof, but we are highlighting that as an alternate as we do know that there is some life still left on this roof. And if it's advantageous to break it out as an alternate so that on bid day, we can make the decision on whether or not it's something that the town would like to afford. Regarding the interior upgrades, there's a lot of finishes that are being done. Carpet and flooring will be replaced, paintings. Some partitions were being removed in order to accommodate larger conference areas. Projector will be installed. We have ceiling upgrades on an as-needed basis, upgrades to certain lighting fixtures, as well as furniture needs. So the furniture needs is also will be procured from a state bid list. We've done an inventory with both departments about any of the furniture that they have that they can be reused. So we will be budgeting for a moving company for both departments as well as purchasing new furniture as needed in certain spaces. A new kitchenette with sink will be located on the second floor, as well as the installation. I don't know if you remember going into the fire department. They have some, what they call, it's not a skylight, but it's almost a sunbeam penetration, a light tube that we're going to be installing. We worked with the design team to make sure that even if we don't take the roof, that it can be flashed incorrectly. They have that product that they expect is something that can be put in even if we don't replace the roof. So that will bring in some natural light up onto the second floor that currently doesn't have any. And then in the basement, we'll be outfitting the IT cabinet to include new network rack and switches that Nancy will be procuring where all the low voltage will be run back to. And then there'll be some demolition of existing walls in order to open up the space down in that basement area. Okay. I think that covers it for the scope right now. And I can go through some of our schedule and where we're at right now.
Were there HVAC units being replaced or?
As needed. And so they've been assessed in total. And the MEP consultants have gone through and done an assessment on each to see what can be salvaged, what needs to be replaced, or if anything needs to be repaired. If it's still within its life cycle, then they've been charged to keep it and to bring it up to new condition.
And if we're looking to replace them, are we doing heat pumps or likes?
They're going to replace in kind of what's already there with the system that's already there.
We should check out the heat pumps because there's the credits form, they're probably cheaper to operate and everything else. So.
Agreed. Okay.
If we are replacing things.
Okay. I will look at the schedule tomorrow about what's being replaced on the MEPs. Regarding our schedule, like I said, we have gone out on the street to prospective builders. I have looked at our online repository that we have for, and it looks like we're having some good interest on this project. We've had about 25 to 30 contractors that have pulled the drawings currently off of our website, many of which are general contractors. So that is a good sign at this point that there would be some interest for this. We have a pre-bid conference onsite at the location on the 14th of March at noon time. That'll just give an opportunity to any bidders to come out and take a look at the site. No questions will be answered there. They need to be formally written in writing to myself that can be answered by the design team and then distributed to anybody that has the plans currently. There's also an RFI period where contractors can ask questions, request for information. That deadline will be on the 18th of March or the 19th of March? I'm sorry, the 18th. So then on the 20th of March, the filed subbidder's deadline will be due at noon time. And then the week following, on April 3, the general contractor's deadline will be that date as well. So on that date, we will receive a spreadsheet from our online bidding service that will give us the low bidder. Then we would be checking their references and their DCAM scores to make sure that we recommend that this is the correct contractor that we want to go to. So in saying that, this schedule allows us, in order to review with the town and any town departments and committees, such that with those approvals, we can go on to the town warrant for annual town meeting. We would be able to assemble the total project budget for the vote on May 7. I did say that here, with a successful vote, we estimate that the construction would be about eight months for this.
So on things like the roof for these alternates, who's making the decision on whether they're in or out?
So on bid day, that will come in as bid alternate one, alternate two. And then we would analyze it and show you who is the low bidder based on what the alternates are, who's the low bidder without alternates, who's the low bidder with alternates. And then ultimately, it would be the town's decision whether or not we would be taking this. We could, based on our previous, last year's budget, we could make a recommendation on whether or not we think it's a good fair price for this.
So then it's PMBC or this board or?
Yeah, I think at that point, it would be a combination because then the bids would be in. And so it would be a combination, probably a conversation with FinCom Select Board and PMBC as to how to proceed. You know, there are certain advantages if the, you know, with the roof, if we're able to do that work at the same time. So, I mean, the useful life of the roof is 30 years. It was put up in '92. So even though we do have some, maybe some more use to it, it's going to, you know, be something that would need to be immediately put onto the capital plan. So I think once the information's in, we'll come back to you and start making a determination in terms of what the appropriate full scope of the project would be.
So I'm wondering if on the HVAC systems, we want to put them separate also because I believe if we do the heat pumps, there's the possibility of going through green communities and getting grants?
I think right now, yeah. I mean, the bids right now already.
It's still possible to go through an addendum phase. And I can look into that tomorrow with the designer.
But I checked on the green communities piece too, but I'm not, I seem to recall that was a potential.
Yeah. And regarding that decision on whether or not, when that needs to be made, we are putting in the bid documents that the contractor needs to hold their bid, and their bid is contingent upon a positive vote at town meeting. So that does give the town a little bit of time to make their decision on whether alternates are going to be decided or not. I did steal a few pictures from our designer, just some of the analysis that they did on the exterior of the building, some of the rotting sills and roof edges that we had just to kind of showcase the scope that they highlighted when they did their feasibility study on what's to be done here. So more to come. My next update, I hope to provide a little bit more in detail of once, you know, if this project does happen, you know, some progress photos on what's going on. So that's it for 36.
Hang on one second. Mr. Sanders, you got something for us?
George Sanders, 682 Lake Road. Why are we putting a kitchenette on the second floor when there's a kitchen on the first floor? We have an elevator that goes from the second to the first to the basement. With the excess money and.
George, I don't want to get into this kind of detail right now. This is just a review of what's before us. So that's something that will come up at PMBC. That's all, this is already mixed into the recipe.
Well, he's bringing the tour, so why can't we speak on it?
We can. I want to open it up.
I said, me as a citizen, why can't I speak on it? He's here.
Decisions that have been made by the stakeholders.
Well, I'm dealing with the stakeholders. I'm saying that he's bringing this tour, and we're the taxpayers. We should have a say. a say.
Not a courtesy, I allowed you to speak, but I'm not going to go down that road, I'm sorry.
You not, let me finish first. You not let me as a citizen say what I have to say.
This is not open for public debate. It's an update to the board. If you want us to give feedback, send an email to the board, and we'll offer those same questions.
This is two minutes of public.
Would be a public input coming up after this item. Thank you. Sorry, Brian.
No? And we do provide updates on a bi-weekly meeting to PMBC, where we do go through programming and updates on how that is, and the designer is able to go through their notes and their analysis on certain design items that we'll be willing to discuss.
The next PMBC meeting is Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Any other questions or comments? Brian, always up there.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
He doesn't look exhausted.
Mr. Chair, should we probably go back to the mail?
We can probably go to the town administration.
If he wants to, okay.
I'd rather go to public input now, just allow.
Sure.
All right, so next up is public input. I just asked that you come to the microphone, state your name and address, and that anything message that you have for us be restricted to two minutes. Any public input? This ends.
I only hear y'all fifty-two minutes, and put a clock in here, I'm tired, people.
Got it right here.
No, wait, people can see it. George Sanders, 672 Gray Road. I feel that this is an opportunity to come to this board and ask questions that affect us as taxpayers in this town. And when you try to restrict that information, regardless of where you got as a public, hearing or not, you're getting information, letting other people ask questions and so forth and so on. Well, we are taxpayers, we should be able to ask questions of certain things that we want to hear, especially when something is put up and you don't have any other form of telling us anything about it. Because at the town meeting, that's when we get it, and that's sort of kind of late for us to say stuff about stuff. There's no reason why. Any citizen in this town should be treated any different than anybody else, including the members on this board, in terms of being able to ask a question. That is pertinent to what is being talked about. And I don't appreciate the fact that tell me, well, I can send an email, this, that. I send mail to this board all the time, and never get an answer from you. So don't talk to me about sending emails, I send letters. And I send letters with information that is pertinent to something that I want to talk about. You know, I understand, you shouldn't treat us like that. We're citizens in this town, and we're paying taxes. And we have the right to ask questions about something that's being built. I supported that 36, King Street, purchase. Because then they told us how much it was going to cost the last time, said it too much ago and before, because they said all the stuff going on. My concern is the fact that we have a kitchen down on the first floor, and we have an elevator in that building. There's no reason why somebody from the second floor can't come down to the first floor. They do it here in this building, or go up to the second floor, or whatever the case You need to be transparent, and you need to treat our citizens first and foremost as first-class citizens in this town. You make no mistake about it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. We're pretty close, two minutes and nine seconds. Any other public input?
Rob Brown, 25 Juniper Road. I'm aware that the OSRP is out for public comment. I think, I acknowledge there's been numerous opportunities for numerous groups and citizens to give feedback and comment. For whatever reason, I find the reading of the draft to be deficient with regard to water resources. I encourage this Select Board, as well as other groups, to attempt to allow the Clean Lakes Committee just submitted some comments in the last week. Every effort should be made to try to get those items into the OSRP. Separately, I attended your presentation with the Finance Committee, in which the Department of Public Works, Steve Vionley, presented. My, I've only been here two years, but Steve's very, very good, very capable. I have no qualms, I want to be real clear about that, but he does a lot. For items that are of interest to me, primarily in Frog Pond, with regard to dredging, things aren't getting done, and there's a lot of changes going on with water resources, and I'm seeing kind of stack up. And so they concern me. I think that different constituencies, I'll say land acquisition seems to be something that is very much in tune, has a lot of infrastructure, a lot of people advocating for it. I'm not seeing the same thing with regard to water resources. It's not anybody's fault responsibility, we're blessed and just out of a lot of great people, doing a lot of great work. But anything that you can do to try to advance these issues, research these issues, prepare for the coming, you know, activities that are needed pertaining to these issues, I encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input? Okay, move on to member updates. What's the start? Should we hit Gary with it?
Sure.
Gary, you want to go first?
How about a weather report? I've been out for a bit, so, yeah, I look forward to working with our potential new fire chief, and outside of that, I will be on the ground in Littleton on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sure. So since our last meeting, I've been to a lot of different meetings. Karen and I were at the Planning Board meeting last Thursday. Cava Cabot and Ford did a presentation on what their potential plan is for 245. There's more talk going on about the MBTA community. There will be a public forum on March 19th at 6:30 in this room for the MBTA community, so everyone should attend. I attended the LALD meeting, they talked, they don't really have any warrants they're bringing to capital plans for the warrant, though there will be one that's basically not asking for more money, just money to be reallocated. Money that they've already allocated for, like, water infrastructure needs to be changed so that they don't have to spend it in the fiscal year, basically.
Stabilization.
The stabilization, I believe, yeah. I attended the MCA land acquisition meeting, which was in Stowe a few weeks ago, and they were talking about various, they've created four dashboards, basically, that you can go through and evaluate properties for their production benefits. So it's not like one rubric, it's four, but you can put them all together. I was at the tax relief Zoom on Friday, they were talking about some potential legislation changes to allow different relief for seniors, where you can basically do a mini tax shift for lower-income seniors that qualify. That's potentially coming up. I was at, I also went to the Green Advisory Meeting, held by Senator Eldridge, and there's talk, there's potentially changing how buildings are funded for green, and some other, a lot of other legislation coming down. And for fun, everyone should remember that Mini Golf will be here in the library on Friday and Saturday, so get your tickets. There's a silent auction going on now. That's it.
The Orchard Working Group, we received 15 responses to our RFI, a 1,500% increase from our last two RFI's. Some of them are very impressive, actually. I think we have a lot of, potentially very good leads on, and a lot of good direction on what we want the RFP to be. The group, I think, is struggling with lease or purchase, and I think we still do want to present to town meeting with something in May. And we haven't really decided yet what exactly we want. It's probably just going to be an information, but there's also been some discussions about potentially crafting an article, so I will keep you informed on that. I was sad to see we got a letter from Nicole from the EHS stating that she was resigning. I responded wishing her the best. I think there have been too many instances of kudos that we got from her boss, Liz, or from the public about the great things that had been done by her for the people in town that need it the most, and I just wanted to thank her from the bottom of my heart for all the, really, all the work she's done for this town. I think it's very substantial. And lastly, I had an interesting conversation with a resident about striping the roads, and whether, since we're not putting the fog lines or the center line on roads. I know we had a brief discussion about it last year, but I wonder if we could have a formal discussion and just, I want to clarify who's making that decision and what criteria they're using, like, to decide whether a road gets lines or not.
That would be a Stevie Yonley.
Yeah, I'm sure it would, but, and I remember the discussion, and I do remember that.
The Transportation Advisory Committee was talking about different ways of striping roads.
And saying that, on the whole, for small roads, no lines reduce speeds and reduce accidents, but I don't recall whose guidance we were following on, on how we determine whether a road should be lined or not.
Yeah, I agree we should be doing that, and we should probably have more of a formal policy on how we decide that.
Yeah, that's all.
Sure, please. Yeah, we held office hours on March 8th, that was just this past Friday. Actually, I had three or four conversations with folks, really good ones, spoke to a resident with concerns about the removal of the mats on Long Lake Beach, and how that impacts them from an accessibility standpoint. It basically prevents them from being able to enjoy the beach in the off-season. And so I promised that I'd be following up on that to the best of my ability, understanding that, you know, there's lots of different things to take into consideration with that. Let's see, we also talked with a resident who was concerned about the use of engine brakes on Powers Road. Apparently, there is a company just across the line in Westford that has trucks coming in and out, starting around 4:00 AM.
The cement?
The Jake brakes, yeah, yeah. It's Reed Materials. And according to the resident, it's nearly unbearable, starting at around dawn. And he suggested that we look into whether we could, whether we wanted to consider some sort of noise ordinance to prevent use of engine brakes in town, on this road in particular, or town-wide, which I think is worthy of our consideration. So I'll be following up on that to see how we can go about doing that. And so, let's see, we talked about the 15 responses, that we might be bringing an article, the Orchard Committee that is, to town meeting, depending on how they decide to work things in terms of what's... The background is that basically, we realized that we reached a decision point earlier in the process than we hoped we would. We'd hoped to be able to go out with Phase 2 of the solicitation, still being open to lease or buy, but according to the most recent information we got, we have to make that decision before we go out for Phase 2. We can either go out to lease, or we can go out to buy, but we can't do both. So that's why we're changing our focus a little bit to speed up that timeline in terms of recommendations.
Yeah, we got responses that were very strong for both, I would say.
Yeah, and I need to correct that with you, Ryan and Jim, because we had talked last week, and at last week's meeting, it was, the idea was expressed that there was only one or two lease bids, or RFI responses brought in, but now that I've had a chance to dig into them, it's actually more than that, and some of them seem to be, you know, have some credibility behind them. So stay tuned. Littleton Youth Basketball had all their semifinals and finals over the weekend, and with no bias whatsoever, I would like to congratulate the eighth-grade boys' travel team for winning the Central Massachusetts Youth Basketball League title in Division One.
Was there a morsel on that team?
She'll have to check the roster.
Yeah, maybe.
No relation.
Maybe. He sure hangs around a lot, if it's not. Let's see, and I think that's all I had. There's one other conversation during office hours, but I'll let that go until I get a chance to follow up.
Awesome, thank you. First and foremost, I'd like to welcome Chief Benad back, he came back today.
Fantastic.
Looks great, feels great, so welcome back, Chief, godspeed. Had a couple of conversations with some residents as well, one relative to putting signs on 495 to direct traffic towards Route 2 and not down King Street, or somehow redirect truck traffic, because of the amount of truck traffic that's coming down King Street. So that's something that I need to have further conversations with, I don't think that's something that we could really do much with, because King Street is 2A, which is a state road, so it would involve our state rep and our state senator, so. Down the same road, there's some folks that live kind of along that same, along the interstate, on either side of it, looking for some information on what it takes to be on the sound barrier. This came up a couple of years ago, I think you were here at the time.
Take your word for it.
Yeah, I know it's come up before, and so these are the couple of the folks that have brought it up, and I have had a conversation with Jim Marciaro about it, and there is a process that has to go through, and I'm going to just revisit it, just to find out what process we need to go through in order to get some information out there to folks. Also had a meeting with the Committee for the Exploration of Real Estate Tax Relief for Seniors, don't have an acronym for it yet. And one of our focuses was to look at what other communities are doing, especially the communities surrounding us, we're each charged with talking to other communities. We've gotten information from, Sudbury has the Sudbury Plan, which is the relief plan. So I've spoken with them, I've spoken with Westford, Acton, Sterling, Shirley, Groton, Lexington, Bedford, Carlisle, Concord, and Leominster. So it's good to kind of get a feel for, are we in the norm with having so few people that are taking advantage of the means testing and the real estate deferral? And we kind of are. Most of the communities are seeing the same kind of resistance to folks signing up for the types of programs that are available through the state and through the municipalities. So more to come on that, we need to take a look at that, signed up for it, but just couldn't get on it, so I have the link to the website, the webinar, so I need to take a look at that and probably plan on having that available at our next meeting. and probably plan on having that available at our next, at our next meeting. Other than that, you back on Thursday, Gary?
One thing they did say is that the $1,500 number for the write-off, the work-off, I think it's been raised to 2,000?
Yes.
But we have to check bylaws to make-
Correct.
So, I don't know if that's something-
Didn't we already do that, though? Didn't we already extend it to 2,000?
I'm not sure. I don't know that offhand, but I think-
We went from 1,000 to 1,500.
1,500, okay.
Yeah, yeah. We kind of, we lagged behind last time, but you kind of have to wait for the state to pass it. You're saying that it's passed at the state level?
I believe the state has passed it to 2,000, but they said that, they recommended you check your bylaws because a lot of towns wrote into the bylaws-
We did.
-what the amount is, so you have to also update your bylaws.
Yeah, but I think we updated it recently at a town meeting to follow the state, so we should go and check that.
That sounds familiar.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we did that.
This very reason, so-
Last year, probably.
So, not constantly chasing it, yeah.
I think you're right.
Ignorant straight news.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so, shout out to you guys for any town administrators, municipal administrator pitch, mail.
Do you want to do the town meeting, or do you want to do this?
Do the administrator and mail.
Last.
You want to do it last?
Yeah.
Okay. You're going to be here, so.
Right.
All right. So, we will go into the annual town meeting and cut some up.
Is anybody else here for that? Okay, all right. I know, I know, I think Alissa's here for the 7B, but, okay.
Well, you want, okay. You want to do 7B and 7C? Is Erica here?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, let's do that, and then we can actually go up and do 7A as well, right?
Might as well.
All right, so, Tom's not here, so let's do 7C. Unless you're planning on staying the whole night. Excuse me.
Can I, can I just throw something in real quick? I should have mentioned in my, my input, but it's really direct, Jim, did we ever give the, for attorneys to start working the HCAs since they were finally approved by the state?
At the end of last week, yes, we did.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Would you like to go check this?
I'm sorry, 7C.
See, okay.
This is for a vote to approve, a request to place lawn signs on Littleton Common, recognizing graduating seniors from Littleton High School, and I would say Littleton seniors that are graduating from high school.
So, it's all, yeah.
So, Parker, or St. John's Prep, or wherever they're going, yeah, okay. And from May 1st through the 18th.
Thanks for doing this.
Yeah, it's great stuff. Floor's yours, Erica.
Yeah, for the, it started in 2020 as a COVID thing. My, my son was graduating then, and a group of parents organized these great signs with, you know, pictures on them for all Littleton seniors. One of the few good things that came out of COVID, right? It's, it's kind of become a tradition in Littleton. It's great to see them out, out there, and I'd love permission to do it again.
I don't see any reason why not, do we? The issues are, I mean, the only people that ever gripe about it is whoever has to cut the grass, but they can figure it out for a couple of weeks. I don't think we have any resistance.
My, I was just questioning whether you wanted to do it longer. I don't know when the flags go out.
That was my only concern.
I think that's the reason why, is like, the time limit, we did put a time limit on it. I think it's a-
I didn't know when the, if the flags went, I mean, Memorial Day. The information says through the 15th or 18th or whatever. I didn't know if the flag went out on them.
Yeah, I think that's why. I think they said the first of the 18th, I think, is where that would be.
I don't know the exact date that the flags went out. I know last year, they, they had to change, you know, change the dates a little bit because of that, so I, you know, I'm, I'm open to suggestions for a timeline if there's, you know, if you know when the flags do go out.
I think we could put at the discretion of the town administrator's office to, you know, kind of work it out with.
Yeah, and I think I just qualified this, was just saying that it'd be the May 1st through the 18th. So, and then, again, if we need to adjust it-
27th is Memorial Day this year?
Offhand, I do not know.
I think, yeah, I think it's 27.
Okay, so it would make sense as to why they're, the timing, they want to put up the flags, so, but.
Yeah, we're not, we're just not sure when they're going to be putting them up, like-
Right.
The week before or not.
Move to the Select Board to approve the use of the lower Littleton Common for the display of signs with photos of Littleton graduating seniors.
Second.
Move by Mark, second by Matthew. Oh, Mark?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
And Chuck's an aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erica.
Thanks for doing it, Erica. So, 7B?
Assuming you're here for B, okay.
All right. Next up is a vote from the Select Board to acknowledge a disclosure by a municipal employee of financial interest in a municipal contract and approve the exemption of Abigail Warnock as a municipal employee in accordance with Master and Law Chapter 268A, Section 240B.
Select Board's seen a few of these before. This is an individual who has two jobs with the town, I believe, a teacher at Shaker Lane School, and someone who would also be working during the summer at the summer program, so.
Like before, we don't have any issue with it. We like to have people that have already connected with the kids, so I think this is great. Everybody good for motion?
Move the Select Board vote to acknowledge a disclosure by a municipal employee of financial interest in a municipal contract and approve the exception of Abigail Warnock as a municipal employee in accordance with Master and Law Chapter 268A, Section 20B.
Second.
Move by Mark, second by Matthew. Mark?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chuck's an aye.
I would also like to accept essentially one of those items that we might be able to pass off to the town administrator, is updates. I'm just not curious, I'm curious. That does, that does come up quite a bit. I know situation where we would ever say no, unless there's some serious conflict that the town administrator would let us know anyway.
I think that's something we can check on with Town Council, but my, my sense is, yeah, that-
Probably not.
Probably not.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Do I have to go back to item A?
Yes, item A is to vote to approve an employee contract with the interim fire chief, Tom Clancy. He was here earlier. And this is pretty much just housekeeping, right?
Right, the board should have already seen this, correct.
So, any deliberations, any questions?
What, is the motion through May 31st or March 31st?
The thing it's due is leave, so May 31st. I think he has leave, is that why?
I think so, yeah, so it is through May. Well, let's see. Basing this off of, actually, you're right, March, March 31st, unless otherwise extended, so, thank you, good catch.
Move the Select Board vote to approve the employment agreement between the town of Littleton and interim fire chief George D. Clancy for the period January 1st, 2024 through March 31st, 2024.
Second.
Paid by Mark.
Second by Matthew.
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chuck's aye.
And so this is set up for the chair's signature, so Gary will probably be sending this to you via DocuSign for your approval. Okay.
I only have limited powers. All right, up to the annual town meeting.
Sure, okay. So, at this point with the town meeting, we are, the proposal to you tonight is to kind of go through an outline of the various articles we're looking at and walk you through where we are. So, we have some members of the Finance Committee here, so we'll just sort of walk through that. First piece is annual report, so that all, you know, all of our committees and boards who have an interest in wanting to provide an update on the status of what, how their committee's doing. And you mentioned Nagog Orchard Ad hoc Working Group, so there might be an opportunity there to provide an update. I do not have on this as of yet a placeholder for any article that you'd want to present, so you reminded me of that, and I will make a note of that, to add that as a friendly amendment, as a placeholder. I will say, in terms of timing, the hope is that we'll be bringing something more fleshed out to you two weeks from now, but right now, this is kind of where we are. So, the hope would be that you could vote to accept these in at, at the end of, as a final motion. So, so there's that. Next thing is a bill of prior, bills of prior years. I'm hoping that will be bill of prior year. There was one, one piece that we got in from town, from KP Law, that was one from last year that they forgot to bill us on, so, and they've asked for us to pay it. Three is our fiscal year 2025 operating budget. We've had a lot of discussions about that, so that's a standard, standard budget where we would hold, I think, I think the town moderator typically will hold for each section and allow people to ask questions about various departmental budgets at that time. Number four is departmental revolving funds, Evergreen article where we have limits as to spending on any, in any given revolving fund, standard limit we have to be able to prove. Number five is to amend the fiscal year 2024 water enterprise budget. This is, was a request of LALWD. I'm not sure exactly what they'll be looking for there. Mark, I know you mentioned you had attended that meeting, but they had asked to put that in here, so I'm not sure what, what exactly they're going to be looking for there. But we did talk about number six, which was the establishment of a water capital stabilization fund to allow them to put funds in that stabilization fund and then withdraw funds from that in any later year for them to, to move forward. So, that's something they're looking to do. The next item, I've highlighted it because this was not in the initial list, but I was replying that, I should add that. So, this is to establish the opioid settlement stabilization fund. As the board may be aware, town has received funding as a result of the opioid settlements, but right now, there isn't a clean way for us to basically segregate those funds, to then dedicate them to opioid-related, well, what's allowable for use under the opioid settlements. So, by putting it in the stabilization fund, we're basically taking those funds in and putting, and transferring from free cash into the opioid stabilization, settlement stabilization fund to allow us to use it for other purposes that are allowed under the law, which are, it's relatively narrow, but we'll be working probably with the Board of Health on that to determine where those uses are. Right now, this, all this does is segregate the funds. Number eight is the water enterprise operating budget standard, and then the, number nine is to authorize the utilization of sewer betterment revenue. It's, it's more of a formality. We're starting to get revenue in for sewer betterments. We're applying some of that sewer betterment revenue in FY25 budget, but this is, I think, just a legal requirement for us to give the official okay to do that. Number 10 is to authorize the utilization of the proven investor rule for town trust funds. So, I believe it was the FY24 state budget that basically allowed municipalities the right to utilize this rule, which allows for more flexibility for our trust fund committee to invest funds in a more, a broader group of investments as opposed to some of the, some of the limitations that we have on, some limitations would be a basic list that you have, which you really don't get much return on your investment. They're very safe, but provide a poor return on investment, so, I don't know. Steve, if you want to add anything to that, but this basically formally kind of allows us to do that.
We're going big into day trading and derivatives now?
Yeah, well, nothing like that, but it's a little bit below that.
Crypto, oh yeah, crypto, sorry.
Okay. Number 11 is fiscal year 25 sewer enterprise fund operating budget, again, standard item, so we all have a table for that. Number 12 was in your original list, which is, as it related to Cedar Hill, this was a LALWD, I think it would be a series of different Warren articles, but we've been reached out to by LALWD saying, you're not going to be ready for this town meeting to present anything along those lines. So, so that would be removed from, from this. The next piece, we'd be, I had a conversation with Steve Anudie earlier today. We'd be looking to probably combine Articles 13 and 15 as it relates to authorizing transfers from the trust funds for Russell Street School Relaxation and Mindfulness Room, and then the separate piece, which would be for, from the Bradley Sampson Relief Fund for Animals to EHS to allow for EHS Animal Care Assistance Program. So, it's basically taking monies from our trusts and putting them into programs. So, we'll probably have that as a table or something like that on the, but combine it into one article for efficiency's sake. Article 14, we're still trying to figure out, this was something that was requested by our town accountant. Our town accountant has been up for a few days, so I just asked the board to hold off on that because I can't give you a solid explanation on that. When we, when we ask what articles you want to put forward, we, you know, we get the broad swath of different things, and so I just, at this point, ask you to hold off on that. Article 16 is our capital plan, mainly transfers from free cash, so that's capital items from available funds. And number 17 would be other items from available funds, so we have a little bit of funding left over for free cash to, that we talked about at one of our prior meetings, about putting money toward a classification and compensation plan, a few other small things. So, there'd be a table for that one as to how we intend to spend that down. Number 18 is, I think we're probably rewarding, rewarding this, another conversation with Steve. There was an earlier Warren article from a prior fiscal year where the, we basically are setting money aside for senior center feasibility study. Now that that's essentially done, there's a balance left in that that we'd like to be able to transfer over to the construction side of the project and to move that forward. Number 19, Brian Forbes was here earlier today, providing his update on the Indian Hill Music School and what our process will be on that front. So, this would be to provide for funding as it relates to Indian Hill. Currently, the discussion we've been having ongoing with the Select Board and the Finance Committee would be prospectively a transfer from the capital stabilization fund, so, to, to fund whatever the bids come in for that. And 20 is community preservation budget, so we'll be making, we're working with the CPC on that, again, regular item that's in the annual budget. 21 is the LCTV budget. 22 is our compensation grid for FY25. 23 is deposit, I think we're, is our deposit into the capital stabilization fund, standard item. Item 24, we are proposing to remove because monies that we would normally be putting into our debt exclusion stabilization fund will now be, for this year, we're proposing to put that into the school building stabilization fund. So, we, Chuck is on the committee, as is Steve, for Shaker Lane, the Shaker Lane School. We're going to be reviewing two proposals tomorrow night in our meeting to go over the design submittals, two design submittals, and making a recommendation on a contractor there, so that's coming along, and so this is trying to think ahead in setting monies aside for Shaker Lane.
Why do we want to have a separate school building stabilization fund rather than just a debt exclusion stabilization fund? Why are they different?
Well-
Your market?
Yeah, I think that's pretty much, that's pretty much it.
Just to make sure that the money's dedicated for that project, just like with the senior center.
Yeah, I think more specificity helps, helps direct it, I think is the thinking. So number 26 is the use of the, use of the debt stabilization fund for FY25 excluded debt. Remember, that's what, what the purpose of the debt exclusion stabilization fund is, to help offset some of those costs. Number 27 is the appropriation of the transportation network company funds, which is a fancy way of saying your Uber and Lyft monies that the state provides to us, usually it's less than $10,000, but we have to appropriate it. We, number 28 is to authorize the departure from the Shoba Associated Boards of Health. As the board may remember, we had to make a two-year commitment to the Shoba Boards of Health. So that would be for FY24 and FY25. So that's in the budget to continue on with them. But we have to be able to signal to them that our intention would be to, as of FY26, to depart from the Shoba Associated Boards of Health. Jim will provide an update today, when he provides an update that we actually had our new, our new Board of Health Director start today. So, which is kind of, kind of exciting. So, so that's, that's, you know, that's making this feel that much more real. So. Number 29 is a request from, I think, Town Planner. So that's to authorize the adoption of federal emergency management flood insurance rate map panels. More information to come on that, but right now that's more of a placeholder. Number 30 is citizen petition. The, a town meeting warrant is open. So with 10 voter petitions, they can come forward with proposals. So this proposal is to revise cannabis bylaws to require charcoal air filters. So we have this being, this is currently being reviewed by town council. All the votes have been certified. It's a legitimate article, so, you know, it will come, come through on that front. So, but, you know, everything in terms of what it needed to be submitted is fine. Then we get into a couple other planning board articles. One is to amend the registered marijuana dispensaries and adult use marijuana bylaws. I believe this is limiting the number of grow facilities in town. So I'm not sure if it also limits adult use marijuana bylaws, but we're still waiting for some. Is it just the growth facilities?
Well, we already limit the adult use, the retail.
Yeah, fair.
So we have two grow facility licenses right now. There's four types of grow facility licenses. We have two of them in place. We do not have the other two types. And the, what the planning board wants to do is restrict so that there cannot be the other two types. It would require this and then a, and then a ballot vote.
Yes, that's, that's one of the things we talked about at our staff meeting today. So to supplement that would be, I think they were targeting, I think, the September election and doing a local, local vote on that. So, yeah, thank you, Mark. Article 32, MBTA Community Zoning Bylaw and Zoning Map Amendment, bringing it back again. I believe, do you remember, Jim, what is the date that we have our meeting with the MBTA? Is it the 19th?
The 19th.
The 19th, that's right.
It's the community.
And so it'd be the community meeting. So we posted it for the select board as a full meeting. Should there be a majority of you attending to be able to debate anything and discuss that with the planning board at that meeting? So, and, you know, we've, I think also at that last planning board meeting, there was the, Cavit, Cavit and Forbes had provided an update on what they're looking at at 245 Foster Street. So a lot happening on that front. So hopefully there'll be some healthy discussion from the neighborhood on that. And the last item is fiscal year 2024 operating budget line item transfers, nothing, we kind of have that as a placeholder and we'll know closer when we get to the May 7 town meeting whether we actually need that and permission from town meeting to make those transfers. So that's pretty much it. So, you know, I don't know if the board has any, any questions from that, but basically all we're really requesting today is the permission to be able to move forward with these, put them on the warrant and, you know, more information provided at the next meeting and other adjustments that we'll need to make on that. So if there's anything else that you want further information on to, you know, if we want to bring, bring Maren forward with any other questions on the planning board articles or anything else, please let me know.
Brian, if I may, Mr.
Yes, gotcha. It's your board.
I know, wait, Jim, in one of your updates, you talk about the Webster property a little bit. I know there was a meeting between you and the Websters. And I think, Mark, you might have some information on that. I didn't know if there was anything coming forward on an article we talked about, a ballot question potentially. Has there been anything that's happened with it, with that at all? I know I've been out a month, I'm not too, too into where we were at with that.
Yeah, no, my, I'm sorry. My first introduction to the issue was, was last week at that. And as you can, as I had relayed to the, to the select board, the communication with the Conservation Commission Chairman and Mr. Webster, that the chair felt that it was in the select board's hands with moving any, moving anything forward. And I had, I believe I had shared with you in my, in my update, the, the language within that, within that email, that's the impression I got. Mark?
So I think the Websters are expecting an article. We kind of hinted that we would be doing that, whether it's a debt exclusion or they're figuring out if they can use CPC funds or not. It's still up in the air. But I think there, we did tell them we would do another article as a potential debt exclusion or something else, so.
They would, they would end up on the ballot. There's two, it's two phases. One has to be.
If it's a debt exclusion, yes.
Yeah.
So we should put a placeholder in now and, and I think when Gary and I are, when Gary's back, you and I will meet Gary and we'll talk more about it.
Okay. This is the exercise on right of first refusal. Is that correct? Because that came in after town meeting?
I don't think so.
That'll be something else. That's a purchase. I believe it's, it's a straight purchase. It's not right of first refusal.
Well, Jim, they, they've already provided, or they tried to provide a right of first refusal, but it wasn't legally compliant. So we basically gotten back to them and said that, you know, it's deficient as presented. So, but, you know, then the ball is kind of in their court in terms of that particular matter. But I think this is a separate question as to the debt exclusion question.
I guess we should have it bookmarked on, we can always take it off.
Whatever the spirit of the board is, that's, this is your warrant.
I just, I just know that we had discussed it. I know we didn't get any in-depth conversation.
I would put it, we don't, we don't have to finalize this until next, our next meeting.
Yeah, two weeks from now.
So I put it on as a, put it on for now and then in two weeks, we'll figure out more.
Okay.
While we're adding placeholders, so in addition to the Orchard potential placeholder, the Shetree Committee, they will potentially be bringing an article for us to, or a bylaw for us to review and decide whether we want to approve to bring it to the meeting or not.
Okay, can I add that? Anything else?
I hope not. Unless these are simple, we're already looking at a long night or two nights.
Mm-hmm.
Call of articles, did?
So I, so I guess the request here is just to, at least for the list that we've given with, you know, a few things that we added and a few things we took off. Another thing we're going to consolidate. So if the board could read the motion unless there's any other questions in terms of, and with the amendments of the, of the placeholders that you've already discussed, which would be for Nagog, the Nagog Hill Orchard, the Shetree Committee and the purchase of 33 Bulkland via debt, debt exclusion.
Move the select board approve adding the list of articles presented at their meeting as amended?
As, yeah, to the, yeah, as amended to the May 7.
To the May 7, 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant and Warrant Report.
Second. Moved by Mark, second by Matthew. Mark?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Okay, 5:00. I want to go to minutes and then we'll come back to.
Good.
So I'll be here until about 11, I've got enough.
Perfect. So we've got one that goes back to.
2023, right. So as we were, this is part of, yeah, yeah, this is part of our cleanup. So we had Sue go back and, and take those minutes.
So those were both joint meetings though, right? So we just approved our minutes. Yeah, I'm just.
Yes, yes.
One says joint and the other says not, so.
That's, yeah, so they could both be joint meetings, yeah. So that's, that's fine, Mark.
Move the select board vote to approve the meeting minutes from the joint select board finance committee meetings on January 17, 2023 and February 26, 2024.
Second. Moved by Mark, second by Matthew. Mark?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chuck's aye.
Thank you for the, thank you for the catch, Mark.
All right, so.
Back to.
Back to Miami. All right, so we are.
Three.
Yes, circled it. Well, it's read mail, but we also, town administrator updates, right?
All right. Okay. Do the, you want to do the mail first?
Sure.
Okay, great. Current openings on town boards appointed by the select board. We've got one on the Clean Leaks Committee, one Economic Development Committee, one Permanent Municipal Building Committee, one Sustainability Committee, three alternate citizen at large members for the Transportation Advisory Council. Anybody in, in the world of Littleton and beyond who would like to receive some public notifications for the town, whether it be community impacts, transportation issues, public health concerns, town events, town meeting changes, excuse me, public safety activity, please go to register www.littletonma.org/subscribe. We are in receipt of a letter from, excuse me again, from the governor and lieutenant governor, in regards to our Chapter 90 funding, and that has been increased. And we have through statewide and we are, Chapter 90 appropriation for fiscal year 25 is $397,562.93. And good news, we have Central Massachusetts mosquito control project for FY24 and 25, which includes a 5% increase over 24 budget, 25 budget is a 5% increase in the town of Littleton. And ultimately statewide, that is over $3 million budget for that. And the town of Littleton is good enough to receive 1.9% of that, of that total, which provides us with $59,816.
And that's actually paid, paid for via our cherry sheet, so.
We've also received official notification, even though we knew about this, our assessment for the Neshoba Valley Technical High School School District, sort of the FY25 certified assessment, and Ryan has confirmed it, $894,143.
This is one of those last tweaks we had to make to add a little more to it, to make up for that difference. But we have money in the budget now to do that for FY25.
And one thing that Matthew had mentioned earlier, we received the resignation from Nicole, who is moving to, with the, to the town of Groton. And congratulations to her. And that's a truer testament, it's a true testament to the team that is here that clearly brought her skill set to a point that she felt that she could become a director in another community and, which is, it's, it's, it's pretty impressive all the way around. I'll quickly go through the updates that I'm going to, some of these which you have already been notified. The Littleton Police Department was awarded $2,150 for defibrillator grant. Congratulations to them. We have been working internally with the team, with LALWD, DPW on the strong gas order that has been coming up for years, for, for quite a while over King Street, around the 495 ramps. So we've been able to, I have been able to reach out to some, some peers that, when I was with the state and be able to try and expedite a permit that National Grid has applied for, for repair and through DOT. So we'll continue to have a, have a, watch that. I received a copy of the registered businesses from the town clerk, from the town clerk's office, which I wanted to, to review because I will be starting, be going around to visit area Littleton businesses for a couple reasons, introducing myself and also, you know, listening to them. And if there's any questions, concerns or anything like that, we can, and see if we can offer any, any assistance or some information that would, that would, that would help. I'm also going to explore with LALWD, looking at the landfill capping, finish capping that landfill and then potentially having solar panels go on, on there. That would be a revenue source for the town. Small, very, very small. It's not going to, it's not going to turn our deficits around by any means, but it's going to serve two purposes. It will, I mean, clearly we're, it's our message with renewable energy that is sustainability. That's an important thing going forward. We've always maintained that it is a revenue source coming in, but it's also finishing capping the landfill with DEP. We'll get off their list. They can check that box for the town of Littleton, which is, which is, which would be very, very good. I've been asked by the chairman of commerce to sit on a panel with other managers and administrators in the area and to talk about what's going on in, in Littleton and looking forward to that. And we could potentially, and I'll take any, any suggestions of what you would like for me to share with the community. And I will, it's, it's April 3 in Devon's, Mass. So I'm sure it's going to be a sellout crowd now. Let me see. We had already mentioned, Ryan had already touched base about the Shaker Lane Building Committee, what they're voting on the designer and moving forward and then presenting that to MSBA. Also Regional Animal Control Officer, we are in with five or six other communities. I've confirmed with Chief Pennard that he would like to, you know, continue that relationship. And so I've notified the town of Boxborough, we will continue to maintain that. And it's probably approximately a $17,000 responsibility for, for the town, which I believe, because there's an extra town here, may have been reduced from four. And there was a credit also that we, that we had due. So that 17,000 will actually, will potentially go down. At last Thursday's, and you made, Mark, and you made reference about the update of 550 King Street, but they will be, the owner of 550 King Street will be amending their special permit that was, to be submitted for the April 4 planning board meeting that will incorporate some reconfigurations of the housing component and adding the Boutique Hotel into their plan. So that, that continues to go, go nicely as it continues down. We are also looking at getting our ratings for our financial ratings. We are moving forward with that. We are meeting on a rating call with. We are meeting on a rating call with S&amp;P, Standard and Poor's, our tentative date is April 11, at which point they will ask, we'll have the questions ahead of time, what they'll be looking for. It's not a, a surprise or a gotcha moment, but it is, it is something that we feel very confident that it will be a good, it will be a strong conversation, and we should be receiving our ratings within, within the seven days, approximately April 18. And the ban, then, we will also, part of those bans that will be due, which is about approximately $3 million, that will be due on Friday, May 17, for the senior center, and that is, at this point, that will be just at that point in the, in the course of the project. Going through the department head meeting this morning, as Ryan had mentioned, we started today with, with a, with a new team member. We have a new Board of Health Director, and, which is fantastic, and it's something that we're looking forward to, and something that Karen had pointed out to the office with trash, there was an issue with trash, and then we have, the police was dispatched there to a local, a local business to make them aware of the, of the potential situation, and we also alerted the, the Board of Health Director today to, to please make that, make that in.
He actually went down today, actually, so.
He did?
Yep.
Well, yes, it did, well, yes, that's great. There you go. He's off to a good start.
Taking it in straight off the bat.
There you go. We are also, the assesses office, there are 64 abatements, there are five left, and it's at a 50-50, she, 50-50, that half, approximately half have been awarded the abatements, and, but half have been, have been, have been unfortunately have been declined. IT is very, very concerned. NITC went to, went to a conference last week, as, as you know, and, but came back, and what is, was glaring thing is, where we need to do a lot better is the IT training for everybody, even elected bodies, that we need to make sure that we're, everyone is, is finishing their, their training. Open Space Plan, the Poxon Rec, the Open Space Plan, that transition, that's tentatively been approved by the state, and, and proud, and I'm, I'm sure the Select Board knows that the Littleton Poxon Recreation have been selected as Agency of the Year for the, for the Commonwealth, which is, and they are having an event, awards event on the 19th, and, which is, which is fantastic, great for them. DPW is transitioning out of, out of winter mode, and there seems to be some issues with the transfer station on the collecting, but we'll work through those things, through those issues. Town Clerk, there were a total of 5,002 individuals who voted last week. 1,800 were mailed in, the rest were walk-in, walk-ins, but very, very low. And senior and veterans work off hours, it was approximately 7,000 hours this week, I mean, during, during this period, and, which is, which is quite, quite impressive. Last but not least, we have LAL, knowing, understanding that sustainability and energy concerns are very, very important to the Select Board. LALWD and Energy New England, they did an assessment in 2015 with Town Buildings. Since that, since the buildings and the technology has changed since then, LALWD and Energy New England have coordinated new assessments, and successfully negotiated with National Grid to co-fund the assessments contract at RISE to perform the assessments. So LALWD, fantastic, outstanding, working with them and to do this, so we're looking at the Houghton Building, 5,000 square feet, the fire station, 22,000, Police Department, 13,000, the high school, 125,000, the middle school, 75,000, Russell Street, 76,000, Shaker Lane, 74,000, Shattuck Street, 110,000, and the library, 24,500. So those will, those will go through with assessment again, and see how we can improve our energy conservation and get more, more efficient at.
They're not going to assess their own headquarters?
All right.
In the highway.
Yeah.
In the highway building.
That makes sense.
No, I'm asking, like, I didn't, that wasn't on the list, was it?
Yeah, I think they're doing it on behalf of the town, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
No, the highway building makes a lot of sense, though, since we've got it slated for. Jim, is anybody, has anybody RSVP'd to the Parks and Rec Award Dinner from Select Board?
I, yeah, I, because of the 19th, because of the, the MBTA Communities on the 19th, I'm, I'm not going to be able to, I would have loved to have gone.
Okay.
Not yet.
And then that April 11 call?
Yes.
Is that open to?
No.
Members of the SB?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I answered the question.
No, that's okay.
Yeah.
Oh, the Select Board? Of course.
Okay.
Oh, absolutely.
Could you send me any info for that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The, the, the time during the day, and that's a tentative day, so I, once it's confirmed, it could be the 11th, it could be the, I'll, I'll let you know.
Which call was that?
Finals, S&amp;P.
Nice. Well, that's it?
Done.
Yeah. Brian, do you have anything?
All right, before we adjourn, I was remiss, and Mark gave me a good nudge. High School Drama Department is putting on Seussical.
That's right.
The weekend of the 22nd, 23rd, 24th, so we're not going to meet between now and then, other than being at the meeting on the 19th, but we don't have the microphone, so. On the 22nd at 7:00 PM, the 23rd at 1:00 PM and 7:00 PM, and on Sunday, the 24th at 2:00 PM, approximately, I think there's 27 kids in the cast, and it's probably about 15 kids that do tech and stage crew and all that kind of stuff, so it's, it's, Seussical's a fun show, so.
Yeah, it's a great show.
Did they get something in the schools recently, I heard?
Yeah, they wanted some of the younger kids.
And they're doing a storytime, I think, at the library?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good stuff.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made by Karen, something made by Matthew. Karen?
Hi.
Matthew?
Hi.
Gary?
Hi.
Mark's eye, I'm eye. All right, thank you very much, everybody. Again, we'll be at the 19th with the Planning Board, and then our next meeting isn't until 25th, correct?
Thank you.
Thanks, Littleton.